All right, Jen. Are we ready from a technology perspective? We're set to go? Okay. Cory, we're good? You can hear us? Excellent, thank you. All right, why don't we roll them? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the School District of Waukesha Regular Board of Education Meeting for February 9th, 2022. To start off our meeting, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Reindert.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Thank you, Sue. And also, Sue, have we been properly posted?
Yes, we have.
Thank you for doing that. Always appreciate it. We're going to roll right into our bright lights tonight. We have staff from Randall STEM to present on a portfolio. Who's going to kick us off for that? Oh, okay. They're down the hall a little bit, so.
Practicing.
Practicing? Oh, gotcha. Welcome.
Hi.
Hopefully, everyone's doing well tonight.
We are. This is a full house tonight. And I kind of warn them, I was like, you guys, I don't know if there's going to be microphones or a table, so we'll just go with the flow when we get in.
Well, just remember, we're all here to listen to you. We're very excited to listen to you tonight. And we're moms and dads, grandpas and uncles, so just relax and just enjoy talking with us, okay?
So, I am Melissa Horn. I am the principal at Randall STEM. And we are here to talk about our and celebrate some great things that are happening at Randall STEM. In particular, as some of you know, we do not have report cards at Randall STEM. So instead, to how we share out progress is through a portfolio. So this has been a little bit of a three-year process for us to figure out what that portfolio looks like, how it is. We actually are working very closely with a wonderful company in Chicago that's let us really design our own portfolio. So with student help, with teacher help, we've been able to get to a place that we can come tonight and share what we have. So I have some friends with us, and they're going to share and talk you through kind of what it looks like. And we have a first grader, then we have some fifth graders, and then we also have a parent view to show you as well. So.
Fantastic.
So I'm Deanna Day. I'm the first grade teacher. I'm also part of the committee who helped develop the portfolio. So my first grader is Graham, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about how we utilize it in the primary grades.
In first grade, we used our continuum for uploading our work. We upload our work in reading, math, team, and writing. We upload our work so our teachers and family can see what we do on. Uploading is easy because I already know all the steps every time. Use visuals to help find the correct place to put our work. I will show you how we upload our work for reading, Mrs. Day's favorite. First, you will add the evidence. And then click photo. And then save to take the photo. And then I would submit. Now my parents can use my iPad to see my work I've done all by myself. Other any questions?
Wow, thank you, Graham. That was a great demonstration. Do we have any questions for Graham? So Graham, Graham, how often will you upload something to your portfolio?
Uh, every time.
Is that like once a day or a couple times a day or?
Uh, it's one or two times a day.
Oh, fantastic. Fantast- fantastic. You really explained that well. Yes.
Good job, Graham. So I'll hand it over to my counterpart, who's also on the team. She's our fifth grade teacher.
Hello. Are we able to airplay by chance?
I think so. Jen, can you help out if need be?
Okay. All right, so come on up.
All right, so while we are getting set up, we do have three fifth grade students, and I'll let them take over.
Hello, uh, hello, we're fifth graders at Rand. Hello.
I feel like it's not. Can you hear me? No. It looks like it's off.
If you come up to the podium, yeah.
Uh, hello, we are fifth graders at Randall STEM, and we'll be showing our continuum and how we use it. I'm Scarlett.
I'm Emma.
And I'm Minnie.
To get there, I first start by going to my homepage and clicking on the Continuum app. I've already signed in with Google. It'll take you to the assignments page. There you can see a scroll bar. Click it, and you'll be able to change which class and see the proper assignments.
Uh, here are our assignments. We do our work in our class. Then we press the Add Evidence button when we're ready to submit it. There will be different options. The different options will pop up, but we mostly use the camera and file. But we're uploading slides, so we'll press the Drive. Uh, then different, okay, then I'll have you sign in with Google. Then different slides and different docs will pop up, and you pick whichever one you're ready to submit. Okay. Once you submit it, disappears. If you want to look at it again, press the Journal button, and you can change classes here, too. Your teachers and parents will also be able to see this.
Um, now to see the grade for an assignment, you can stay on the Journal tab. If it's needed, use the scroll bar to get to the correct class, and then you'll be able to see all the previous submitted assignments from there, but with a grade. If you just recently submitted the assignment, though, you'll need to wait for your teacher to grade it first. Your scores are shown by two colors. Green, meaning you're proficient, or orange, meaning you either need to keep practicing that skill or add more evidence next time.
Um, when you get to the Continuum tab, you'll have to tap the arrow to get to whatever grade you're on. You can also look back to see how your teachers previously graded it. Um, if it's green, that means you're proficient, and if it's orange, you need to keep working on it. The letters are different subjects, which you can switch between, like math or writing. The numbers show different groups of standards in a subject.
The targets turn green or orange when a teacher has enough evidence to mark the grade. It shows past years, too. You can add evidence to a target using the plus sign, but we haven't used that a lot yet.
I like the continuum. I like the continuum because it's easy to use and it's easy to see our grades.
I like it because all of the assignments have different colors and they're easy to tell apart.
I like the continuum because it's been the easiest portfolio to use throughout the years.
Are there any questions?
What questions might we have for our fifth graders here tonight? Amanda.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. That's, I like that layout. You said when you submitted, you have all the lists, and then it's green when the teacher has graded. You said there's a number. What was that number? I missed what you said about that.
Um, the number is on the Continuum tab, and once you press it, it goes to like, switches between different pages of standards that you either are proficient at or not proficient at.
I see. Oh, thank you.
Mr. Dietz.
So it appears that the continuum is like a rubric for you to know how to be proficient on a given assignment. The directions are there. If you have questions, you can ask your teacher. It really lays it out clearly. And what's nice about having everything online is, you know, if you take it home for homework, you're not leaving it in your desk or misplacing it in some way. Does that rubric on that continuum guide you in completing your assignment? And if so, how?
Um, I think it helps a lot because you can see what you need to work on and then work on it throughout the year more.
And is the goal to be proficient?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Has anyone used the journal section yet?
Yeah.
And what's that for?
Um, the journal, oh, wait, let me come back. Uh, the journal is to look at what you've submitted, like to make sure you submitted it. And I think you can also see, and you can also like show your parents and your teachers that you submitted the work.
So as part of the journal, are you able to make comments on that? And do you make comments? Or do you, can your parents make comments and your teachers?
Um, teachers can make comments on it and grade it, like how we talked about the grading. And then we can, like Scarlett said, we can show our parents and, yeah.
So you train your parents in how to look at this? That's probably part of it? Any other questions we may have? Well, thank you for your presentation. That was wonderful. That was great. Moving on to the portion of our meeting where we have recognitions. We do have one recognition tonight. And Assistant Superintendent Thede will have you announce that recognition.
I would gladly announce. Good evening, everyone. So this evening, the Employee Recognition Award for February of 2022 is being presented to Leah Warner. So Leah, can you stand up? So Ms. Warner started in the School District of Waukesha in 1998 and is currently a music teacher at Summit View Elementary. So her nominators start out by saying that she is a phenomenal music teacher who integrates her passion into the classroom and school community outside of her room. Though her collaboration with staff, through her collaboration with staff, she brings to life this passion to increase student engagement in the arts and their learning. The quality to which Ms. Warner creates these opportunities matches the inspiring effort that she puts in. She offers help when there is a need and is there to help even before it is asked of her. She is the person in your corner and just around the corner when you need someone. While we know time is so valued, Ms. Warner offers her time, knowing the impact it will make on that person's day. Ms. Warner is proactive in meeting with student, meeting student needs, trusting relationships, which in turn leads to positive engagement in school. She promotes a culture of music appreciation throughout the kindergarten through adulthood and contributes to a culture of collaboration through her words and actions. An example that demonstrates these qualities is Ms. Warner's dedication to the integration of arts, both within and outside of her own classroom. Ms. Warner has collaborated with more than half of the classroom teachers at Summit View on arts integration lessons that allow Summit View students to access learning in equitable ways. This collaboration is more than pressing a share button on a Google Doc. Ms. Warner plans alongside teachers and co-teaches the lessons. Afterwards, she models how reflection and refinement in one's craft is the most powerful development. Ms. Warner provides strong support and dedication to her students and colleagues on a daily basis. She makes the view at Summit View brighter each and every day. So on behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Leah Warner on being selected to receive the Employee Recognition Award.
So every day at Summit View, I am surrounded by colleagues who work so very hard to meet the needs of our students. So I am incredibly humbled to have been singled out amongst that group to receive the award this month. When your time and energy that you put into your teaching is acknowledged and noticed, it's very gratifying. So thank you, and thank you to Garrett and Lindsay for the nomination.
That's just as nice as a plaque, I think. Fantastic. Congratulations, Leah. Moving on to our student representatives giving a report tonight. We have West High School. Ethan and Emily will be joining us tonight. What's happening at West?
All right, can we airplay this here?
Only if you can figure out how.
All right. Oh, never mind. Here we go.
I was always confident.
There we go. Okay. Good evening, School Board. I am Ethan Warner, son of School District Employee of the Month. And at Waukesha West, thank you. At Waukesha West, I am involved in the soccer program. I run track and field in the spring. I'm in the drama department. I'm in the Wolverine Leadership Academy, our ignition program. I direct an a cappella group in the mornings, and I'm part of National Honor Society.
Okay, I'm Emily Wong. I am also part of the ignition program. I'm the social chair of the choir, and I also, I lead the girls' a cappella group. He leads the guys' one. I'm creative director of the theater program, and I am president of National Honor Society.
So we're both seniors at West, and it's our pleasure to once again be standing in front of you to present all of West's accomplishments and events from the past few months. First up, we'll look at some of West's academic achievements and events that we didn't take a look at the first time around. So of course, we have to mention the new cellphone procedure that's gone into effect in the past couple weeks here. And I'm happy to tell you that it's gone surprisingly well from my perspective and that I'd be happy to answer any questions from a student's perspective at the end if you have any questions about that. And then this time around, I'd like to highlight our track program. We have two pictures on the right of students working on their projects, and then at the end of the semester, presenting their projects, which is the expectation at the end of the year, you have a physical presentation to teach your peers about what you chose in the track program to study. So for example, there are lots of kids who study programming and then present programming to their peers at the end. And I even have a couple of kids who are writing music for their track class and were presenting music to, at the end of the year. And I even heard about one person who is learning how to fly airplanes. So it is very, very open-ended, and I think that is super cool. And also in the bottom-left corner, we have a picture of our acadec team. They recently won their regional competition while earning the highest score in the state by 700 points. And now they're off to the state competition in a few weeks. Next up, we'll take a look at our winter athletics. Top-left corner, we have our cheer team, which recently competed at state. And bottom-left corner, our dance and palms teams. They also made it to the state competition. And then in the top middle, we have our varsity gymnastics team for Waukesha. And this year, they've had multiple top-three finishes, including a first-place finish at their first invitational meets at the start of the season at Okanawak. Uh, in the bottom middle, we have our boys' varsity basketball team. Some highlights of their season include conference wins over Kettle Moraine and CMH. And then in the bottom-right corner, we have our girls' basketball team, which recently held their pink-out game, which resulted in a win over Waukesha South. And they also held a huge raffle with lots of raffle baskets available. And our very own Masters Choir got to sing the national anthem there in all of our pink gear. And then in the top-right corner, we have our boys' swim and dive team. They're pictured there winning first place at an Elkhorn Invite early in the season. But then more recently, we had a lot of swimmers get personal records at their conference meets. And now this team will go ahead and compete on their sectional meets on Saturday. Continuing the sports, we have our ski and snowboard teams in the bottom-left. Our ski team will be competing at state next weekend. And most notably, our boys' ski team took first place in three different races this year. In the bottom-right, we have our wrestling program, which features a wildly successful JV and varsity team. And the varsity team, they recently earned a first place at a 13-team invite over the holidays. And they also had the privilege of competing at a 30-team tournament in Nashville, Tennessee, which I thought was pretty cool. And in the top middle and top-left, we have our student athletes who got to sign with their colleges to continue their sports careers. And we have 14 different athletes there, and they range from runners to lacrosse players to baseball players. And then in the top-right, we have our continued tradition of recognizing student athletes of the month. And so there we have pictured our student athletes from winter sports for the month of November.
Okay, following the sports, we are going to take a look at the musical, visual, and theatrical arts of West, which Ethan and I are both very heavily involved in. So in November, the drama department, we took our one act, Let Me Attend to State, at UW Stevens Point in the bottom-right. Those are all the awards that we brought home. That was 11 of them, one of them being Critics' Choice, which is the highest honor at the WHSA Theater Festival. We had so much fun watching all the other high schools perform their one-acts as well. Um, in December, there were two music department trips. So in the bottom-left, the band went to Hawaii to march in a Pearl Harbor Parade. And then in the middle bottom, that was the choir trip to Disney. We got to perform on a Disney stage. Um, actually, a lot of us came back that same week, and we had to finish up Tech Week for our opening of The Winter Show: Government Inspector, which is pictured in the top-left. In January, the concert choir went to a competition in Onalaska, Wisconsin, which is right outside of La Crosse. That's the top-middle picture. We placed second in competition and brought home best soprano section and best bass section. We stopped at the Turbul University, actually, on the way there and worked with the choir director there. He's like the one in the bottom row on the very right in the plaid. He was super cool to work with and helped us prepare a lot for our performance, actually. The bands, while the choir was doing all of that, they had their first annual festival of the bands. That's where all the West bands in high school put together a concert with all the middle school bands from Les Paul. Uh, we also toured elementary schools. So the band, orchestra, and choir, we toured elementary schools to help fifth graders like prepare for what they wanted to pick for music once they go into middle school. Okay, so while the music department was very busy, the art classes actually covered the entire school with a bunch of tape murals that everyone could watch them build as like we walked through the hallways during passing time. I heard a lot of you actually saw those when you came to visit West. They've also been hosting several ardens on Friday nights. Those are from 3:05 to 8:00. It's like open studio time. They order pizza, and they have a bunch of snacks that you can just hang out and draw. So we've got some things coming up. This Saturday, we actually have an orchestra, their Valentine's Day dance. They play, and it's like a fundraiser slash a super cool like get-together that people can go and hang out at. And then actually, we have an upcoming musical, Little Shop of Horrors, that opens in less than a month, which Ethan and I are both a part of.
All right, moving on to some activities. So as the year progressed, we've seen even more clubs and school activities flourish since we last presented here. So first up, in celebrating Black History Month for February, our Black Student Union organized a weekly speaker series, which features an African-American speaker presentation/interview, which is open to all students who want to come and attend and listen to them during lunchtime on Fridays in February. So we have a picture of that towards the bottom middle. And coming up, BSU also has plans to organize weekly cultural events to celebrate Melanin March. Recently, we saw the formation of the Hispanic and Latin Act Student Union. And their goal is to just have bi-weekly meetings in an effort to combat racism affecting this demographic. And then we also have our Gender Sexuality Alliance, which has taken on similar goals. And in the top-middle right, there's a snapshot from their holiday party. In the top-right, we have our Future Business Leaders of America, which recently competed at regionals, and they'll now be sending two senior students off to the state competition. And in the bottom-right, we've got Fishing Club, which is still going strong and adapting to the weather, as you can see. And lastly, we have our very own print shop at West called We Print West. And this year, they've made over 3,500 shirts. And recently, they just finished a 920-shirt print shop for custodians and maintenance workers across the Stewell District. And they actually just ordered 100 more, and they've already started another job. And so those three pictures towards the top-left show that amazing team.
Okay, so finally, we are going to take a look at some of the community things we've taken a part of. So in wake of the tragic events affecting Waukesha in the past couple of months, we have actually taken on like a huge responsibility in trying to combat and give back to our community. So in November, the National Honor Society and student environmental activists, we partnered in hosting a book drive. So we collected roughly, I think it was 3,000 books from student, like just the classes and the community members in the neighborhood around West. And we sorted them through, so we either sold them in a book sale, which we raised money for the Sierra Club and the Student Garden, and then we are donating the rest of the books that were not sold. Um, so after the Waukesha Holiday Parade, nearly all of Waukesha West participated in Jerseys for Jackson on Friday, December 3rd. As you can see, we've got some staff members and students doing that. And we also sold ornaments outside in the main atrium before winter break to raise money. All of the ornaments that were made were actually sold, and 100% of the proceeds went towards Waukesha Strong Funds. And then even just a couple nights ago, our Wolverine Leadership Academy hosted like a Waukesha Strong Night at the Boys and Girls Double-Header Basketball Game, where they handed out T-shirts and did like a gift card raffle to donate money also to the community fund.
And that about wraps it up. So thank you all. And once again, we would be happy to answer any of your questions. But overall, it's been an honor to be here before you again to present about West.
Thank you. What questions might we have? Wow. Dr. Piasik.
Well, I'm going to bite on the cellphone thing because I may or may not have heard some complaints at home about this new policy. Tell me how it's going.
Sure. So honestly, no matter how much students scrore and maul about teachers telling them to put their phones away, or when teachers catch them trying to sneak it in their pocket and not put it back in the phone caddy, they're really having, from my experiences, what I've seen, whether it be seniors be more mature or something, it's hard to say. But there hasn't been much like retaliation. Students just do it. They come do it. They know that, they know what they're there for. I've had a couple teachers like include in their lessons plan talking about the effects of our, having our phones on us in school and exactly why we're doing that. And so I think students really are starting to accept that. And I like to say that Mr. Pat, he's just a really stand-up guy laying down the law of the land, and I think students respect him for that. He makes the more, uh, daily morning announcements reminding all teachers to ensure that the phones are put away in their caddies. And so I think his presence with this whole procedure change has just established respect and order, and kids know what they have to do.
And before first hour, you can expect a PA announcement from our very own Mr. Pat to remind us to put our phones away.
Thank you.
So do you turn the phones off?
Some of them are not turned off. The other day, we were taking a test in English, and there was one that was just like the whole time. And so I think some of them are turned off, but sometimes they still buzz.
Yeah, you just hear the vibrations. And then kids are too embarrassed to come up and admit that it's theirs. And so it just vibrates until the call ends or whatever.
Yeah.
Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. You shared with us a real large set of experiences you've been enjoying at West High School. Are you both seniors?
Yes.
So I guess the question would be what's happening next for you? After. So I guess the question would be, what's happening next for you after June?
Boy, in terms of me, I'm not sure yet where I'll be attending college. I'm still waiting to hear back from five private universities. And so, once those all come in, the financial aid packages are all on the table, that's when I'll really make a decision, probably in April.
But aside from where you're gonna do it, what is your interest in the future area?
I'm looking to study biology.
Biology?
Yes, I want a degree that will open me up to a lot of different options as I move on to graduate studies. And so I didn't want to go into my undergraduate studies with a very narrow-minded focus. So I thought the biology degree would be able to open me up to a lot of different options.
I can guarantee you that there's people in this room that have changed their minds partway through their schooling, so don't think that's unusual. But give yourself a broad start. That's a good idea. And yourself?
I'm planning on, I'm actually in a very similar situation as Ethan. I'm definitely waiting on a lot of more sessions.
That's okay.
But I'm planning on coupling a study in like media communication, kind of what I do for the theater program, and sociology. So maybe like a double major, but we'll have to see where I end up in the fall.
Well, you both got plans not solidified, and that's understandable, so thank you for that.
And you have a quick, oh, Mr. Dietz.
Have the two of you always been like so high-energy, so involved, so? I mean, have you been like that from early on?
Well, I don't know. I remember Emily actually freshman year in choir class.
Oh, yes.
So yeah, last time, it was Avina standing up here presenting with me, but she was unable to make it to this night, so I actually nominated Emily to come do this with me. And Emily, yeah, Emily's always been a high-energy person, involved in a lot of things, taken on a lot of leadership positions, and a leader in the classroom and especially the arts department.
And what I hear from both of you when you introduce yourself, it's not only about leading, but it's about giving back. And you're constantly giving back, not only to your school with the talent that you have, but also to the community. And that's extremely appreciated by all of us here, as well as those not here. But your resume already is very impressive, just with your involvement, and I have no doubt that the two of you are gonna do great things in the future. So thanks for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, fantastic, you guys. It was a great report. Lot happening at West. Lot going on. Always proud of the school, and you guys did a great job. Thank you for that tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for hosting.
Well, we're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Education. Each individual tonight will be limited to three minutes of time to speak in order for us to hear from our community and then get on to our agenda of the meeting. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, you will get a 30-second warning, asking you to wrap up your comments and conclude at three minutes. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, to refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board and committee meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, and behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between you and the board at the podium, you at the podium and the board. In the podium, also, the area in back of the podium should be clear. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your phones at this time if you haven't done so already. Just a reminder, the speakers are here to address the board and not the audience. We do have a total of 23 speakers tonight. And first up is David Simmons, and followed by Robin Retschleig. Welcome, David.
Thank you. So my name is David Simmons. I'm a Christian minister of the gospel, a priest in the Episcopal Church, the father of a student at Waukesha West, and a taxpayer in this school district. There's been some alarming misrepresentation of Christian belief in the school board debates this year. So I would like to speak to those of you who claim to follow Jesus as your Lord, and especially those who claim faith is part of your decision-making. You've seen a constant stream of the students of this district representing at-risk minorities speaking to you at board and committee meetings, a truly amazing group of students relating their experiences of harassment and exclusion since the inconsistent implementation of a very vague signage policy. Yet you continually pretend the solution is not the return to the previous status quo they explicitly asked for, but whatever measure allows you to continue to supposedly stay the course. Jesus has a word from the Gospel of Luke. "Which father among you would give a snake to your child if the child asked for a fish? If a child asked for an egg, what father would give the child a scorpion?" Jesus goes on to say that even evil people wouldn't do this to their children. A second word goes to those that would represent that the Christian faith somehow supports denial of food to children in our school district, from the Gospel of Matthew. Then he will say to those on his left, "Get away from me, you who will receive terrible things. Go into the unending fire that has been prepared for the devil and his angels. I was hungry, and you didn't give me food to eat." Then they will reply, "Lord, when did we see you hungry and didn't do anything to help you?" Then he will answer, "I assure you that when you haven't done it for one of the least of these, you haven't done it for me." If you wish to continue to make decisions on these issues that harm students of the district out of some internalized political ideology, that's your choice, and it's up to the voters to judge you. But if you continue to maintain that your decisions are somehow sanctioned by the Lord of Life, who said, "Let the little children come to me," you invoke the judgment of God upon yourself. If you claim to follow Jesus, I urge you to emulate Jesus's compassion. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Robin, followed by Paul Reese. Welcome, Robin.
Welcome. I have to do this before I speak. I have to make sure that I express that the views that I say tonight are that of mine and own and not my employer. I work for affiliates, so I have to make sure I say that. I'm a father. I'm a parent of two children that attend Waukesha schools. And Ms. Roddy, my kids go to Ms. Roddy's school, so I know Ms. Roddy. I was here on Monday speaking to the finance committee, and unfortunately, I was, when I left, I could not believe what I saw at that meeting. So I ran some quick statistics. I've got my doodle pad. I did it at lunch today. Mr. Dietz brought to the committee to discuss the eight elementary schools who are not receiving breakfast. I'm gonna say that again, because it's, this is not the high schools, the middle schools, the money, free. He brought it to talk about the eight elementary schools who are not receiving food. I did a quick math, and what I did, I'm a finance guy. I went to the DPI website, pulled the report card. I took each attendance per the 2021 school year. I took the number of students times the percentage of economically disadvantaged. I got a figure. Added those up. The number of students in those eight schools that are economically disadvantaged per, Mr. McCaffrey, you said the administration has given you good figures, is 630 children, roughly. I say roughly because I'm using those numbers. I'm not the finance person that runs the school, so I'm saying it's 630. If I divide that number by the denominator of 11,500, guessing that's about the number of the number of schools, it's 5.5%. 5.5% of the kids in this school district are not receiving breakfast. In September, after the vote in August where it was 5 to 4 to opt-in, the motion did not say to go back to the existing plan, but some board members said that's the way they took it, some say they didn't. Doesn't matter. The point is, is since September, my wife, myself, and countless parents have emailed administration since September. We flooded your guys' emails, all of you, since September, and there's been correspondence between the superintendent and Mr. Clark with Mr. Dietz since September, asking why those eight schools have not been served breakfast. Whether we agree on the money, if it's free, it's irrelevant. How come that was not brought to the board to make those decisions if there was miscommunication? Because when I read it, I read it one way. Mr. Como, you said you read it a different way, so there's obviously some miscommunication. Why did administration not bring it to the board or the committee to discuss since September? That is the definition of insubordination. It's not Mr. Clark's fault. He reports to Mr. Seibert, who is the CEO and reports to the board.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And Paul, followed by James Touchstone.
Hey, Paul. Good evening. Just because I like to prove it to my wife that I'm right all the time. "I Dig a Pony" is the most underestimated song the Beatles ever wrote. Also, I just wanna address something Karen said. That Karen, you have made statements that you don't think that someone of your income class should get free lunch, that you don't believe that that's deserved, that someone in your, makes what you do should get a free lunch. Then I have one question. Why in the world did you eat Greg's on Monday? Wow, you go, girl. Speaking of that, Greg, I got a perfect campaign slogan for you. Soil and Green. Vote for Dietz, he'll give it to you. I also want to address something that Joe brought up. You don't know what Soil and Green is? Joe brought up Diane Voight, so I want to address something that she said. And she said that when kids, when we shut down, if we closed down Whittier, that kids would lose six months academically from a move like that, for having to make a move. They'd lose six months' worth of academics. So when kids go to middle school, to high school, they lose six months. When they go from elementary school to middle school, they lose six months' worth of academics. I find that astonishing, but that's what someone who's got a lot of experience in education told us. I also want to find it really ironic that someone who would say something like that also voted to go from in-school learning to online learning and didn't think that we would lose anything. And how much did we lose from these actions that Amanda, Bill, and Greg gave us? How much did our kids lose? How far did they set them back? Well, the number of students failing at least one class in 2019 at Waukesha North was 54. And in 2020, that number rose to 292. That's a pretty good increase, eh? That's for an increase of, what was that, 292, an increase of 440.7%. Wow. And then in 2019, South had a total of 135 students failing at least one class or more. And in 2020, that number rose to 387, for an increase
30 seconds.
For an increase of 186.7%. In 2019, Waukesha West had a total of 74 students failing at least one class or more. And in 2020, that number rose to 268, for an increase of 262.2%. I also want to say, my grandmother went through the Great Depression. She told me what poor was about. We don't know poor. These people are fools.
Thank you, Paul. James, followed by David Richmond. Hi, James.
Hi, hey. Good evening. I'm James, father of six kids here in Waukesha South. The fact is that we have a school system that is failing our students with 60% below proficiency in reading and math. My real question is, is I've been looking at the district website, talking with teachers, emailing different people. Where is there a plan to change things? What is the roadmap out of the current morass and swamp that we're in? I looked at the agenda for the Teaching and Learning Committee. Listened to that online. We have discussion for actions regarding overnight field trips, which is all great. We have East Alternative High School, high school scheduling update, and the library books, which are all important things. But nowhere in the learning curriculum is there a clear roadmap or a path out. Whenever a business or an organization is failing at 60%, deliverables not coming through, people get upset, and they start to want that to change, especially people that have students in the system. Just an anecdotal thing, we are failing our AP students. I have a daughter who took AP classes at South. She is now in Milwaukee, UW Milwaukee. She was told she, none of her AP classes counted for college credits because they didn't meet the standard of the college. As a parent who's paying for tuition, who encourages his kids to get into AP classes so that they can cut short a semester of school or study a minor perhaps in school, this is just devastating and unexcusable. If you can't pay attention to the small details, like meeting up with the UW system, which is the largest college system in Wisconsin, to make sure that our AP classes meet them, how else are we failing our students, right? These are our best students that are trying their hardest with parental help to achieve more in school. They're taking AP classes so they can get ahead. We're also failing our students on the other end, as 60% of them are below proficient in reading and math. I know people have heard the definition of insanity. It goes around and around, it's doing the same thing and expecting different results. That's kind of where we seem to be at here. We're doing the same thing over and over without a plan
30 seconds.
And expecting different results. This board is responsible and needs to start holding people accountable for getting that done. Who's accountable that the teacher didn't fail so that I'm out extra tuition money? Which person is gonna be held accountable? Administration, board members, individual teachers? Is it my job as a parent to study what the UW system has and make sure that my kid has that here as a student at South?
Thank you, James. Dave, followed by Stacy Keen. Hi, Dave.
Good evening. Before I begin, I'm just asking for a little grace this evening. I do struggle with stuttering, and just like a little extra grace, I will try and keep it to three minutes, so respect that point. $325,000. I'm a Red Sox fan. I've been in recovery for four and a half years. Does anyone care about those last two facts? They shouldn't, because that's about me. $325,000 are missing from the federal government because Mr. Clark took it upon himself to not submit. Let's go back and reflect a little bit, shall we? There's a lot of things going on. This isn't in a vacuum. This wasn't the only decision. There were a lot of different aspects going on with COVID, constantly changing. We can't say, wow, I knew then we should have taken the masks off. That's not the point. It was brought to the finance committee, and the finance committee did a very poor job in June. You came in at a point, and things were looking bright, looking better, 20 months or 18, whatever time it was. It was brought to the public's attention because this school board decided they were legislators and not school board members. You vote on motions as they're presented, not as you want them to read, not as you believe them to read, as read. Mr. Clark did an awful job in presenting what the SSO program is. I don't have time to read it. I encourage all of you to go to the USDA site and read it. It says, "Meals for all students," period, is covered under the SSO. You don't have to turn in monies. This was put in place so that the, get back to normalcy in place. This would have given the board time to put these plans in place, to address some of the situations, like waste. What is the exact plan? Are we going to hit the DPI numbers, which was given this week at 35.1%? I'm asking for those numbers to be reviewed and given publicly and not just falling in the ballpark at where it was before. There are other ways to get numbers outside the meal plan. That was asked in different meetings here, and that also was not answered. Mr. Clark, how would you feel if you went two and a half years and the school board
30 seconds.
Didn't feel it necessary to pay you? That's about what the equivalent of $325,000, which you stated at the meeting. Poor implementation doesn't give the right to disregard. So your choices were either ignorance, arrogance, So your choices were either ignorance, arrogance, or incompetence. Any of those three are incorrect.
Your time is up.
My final point is, I am asking
Thank you, Dave. We appreciate you respecting the three minutes. Stacy, followed by Monica Whaley. Welcome, Stacy.
Hi. First, I want to apologize to you, Mr. Como. I incorrectly stated last month that you voted for hybrid, and you did not. Actually, went back and watched the video, and you actually championed for our kids at that meeting, so thank you. However, Mr. Baumgart, Mr. Deets, and Ms. Roddy repeatedly voted for virtual hybrid masks and quarantines throughout the year. This would prove to be disastrous. Ms. Roddy, your motion for hybrid set our children on a bad path. Now, last week, you told us how pornographic material in the library is beneficial to some students. Who were you trying to convince last week? These two important board issues are ones I can't gloss over and nobody should. Ms. Roddy, somewhere along the line, you started answering to teachers' unions instead of the families who voted for you. Mr. Deets, your stunts the last few months have been nothing short of spectacular. In January, you said a couple things, that COVID was 9/11 times 100 for you. And you also said that getting rid of all COVID mitigation during a world pandemic is just wrong and has hurt us ever since. Exactly who's been hurt? I've seen the opposite. Schools are in session, kids are flourishing and learning. Explain who's been hurt by this. If this is how you felt, why in the July FNF meeting were you the one to motion for the approval of Dr. Seibert's communication to the family stating there would be no mitigation in the fall? Why did you ask how quickly Dr. Seibert could get it out, and then we're still happy to hear it would be in a few days? Why did you second the motion at the full board meeting to approve that? And then after the discussion started, you actually had to ask what was in the email. It had to be reread to you. Two meetings, two motions, one vote, and you still did not know what was in that communication. This tells me you aren't uninformed and not doing your job well. Sounds a lot like your free food vote. I do have in my possession emails from that weekend. You spent a lot of time apologizing for your uninformed vote to people that don't even live in Wisconsin. Again, you were unprepared and uninformed, and you seemed to vote on things you don't even understand. The FNF meeting two days ago was a great performance. Why didn't you have breakfast at Meadow Brook when you were the principal? Why didn't you make sure those eight schools had breakfast last year when the need was probably higher? 400 families in those two schools
30 seconds.
Need free food? That's astounding numbers. But why now? Why not in August 2020? Why not August 2021? How again did you not understand what you were voting for? It seems like every other board member understood that it was about the model, or that the model was not going to change, just the program. I think we all know the answers to these questions. It's not about feeding starving children, it's about politics.
Thank you, Stacy. Monica, followed by Eric Eggers. Welcome, Monica.
Good evening. The title of my presentation tonight is Hypocrisy 2.0. These comments tonight are an extension of my first list of hypocrisies found in this district. Board members who claim to be serving on the board to make the district and students more successful. The Christian values that they recite are a far cry from the hateful rhetoric and disrespectful behavior towards other board members. They are more concerned about waste than feeding students, more concerned about free and reduced percentages, and not the families in need. Our financial professional, who kept changing the reasons why the eight schools were not receiving breakfast. First, Christmas clearinghouse needed the free and reduced numbers to identify eligible families. Then, not enough staff to distribute the breakfast, and now stating that it is a board decision. In the meantime, we lost $325,000 in funding revenue and six months without breakfast for hundreds of students. A committee chair demanding, "I want parents to fill out those forms." Waukesha was the only district to decline funding of SSO in the beginning. All of the other 463 districts within the state needed those numbers as well. Where did they get them from? DPI. In the past meeting, RCFRA stated that he could ask DPI for those numbers. Has he? The breakfast to the eight schools could be changed within days, but once again, it's been delayed. Signage. Administration listening to loud minority voices and continuing to ban welcoming and inclusive signs. Our marginalized and harassed students continue to seek supportive signage in school. And the mother of all hypocrisies, banning our own district's non-discrimination policy due to colorful printing. Censorship. Banning books, spending hundreds of dollars in the time of teachers and librarians to register and pull books, only to have five books taken out of circulation. Allowing a loud hateful parent
30 seconds.
Who speaks pornographic literature at board meetings, sends harassing emails and posts about teachers and staff, to continue subbing in this district. Closing an elementary school because once again, they're acting in the best interest of our students. Such hypocrisy.
Thank you, Monica. Erica, followed by Marilyn Granger. Hi, Eric.
Hi. Next week is Valentine's Day, so I thought I'd relay a message of love. A little something I found on the internet and slightly modified that should remind us all who greatly need our support from every level. Stand with teachers who are losing their limited planning time to cover sick teachers' classes. Stand with teachers who are being asked to sacrifice their health and safety to keep the economy turning. Stand with teachers who are being forced to come back to work sick because there are no subs available to cover. Stand with teachers who are being asked to teach students not only academic skills, but also social skills that have been stymied by multi-year pandemic. Stand with teachers who are facing more behavior problems and violence this year than ever before. Stand with teachers who are being threatened by parents for teaching history and literature. Stand with teachers who, despite their vast education, experience, and rigorous requirements to maintain their licensing, are dismissed by the public as little more than babysitters. Stand with teachers who are spending their own money to make their classrooms safe and welcoming for students. Stand with teachers as they help our kids stand tall. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Marilyn, followed by Lindsey Fleck. Hi, Marilyn.
Hi. I see on the agenda that the Finance and Facilities Committee is going to be talking about approvals of funding for the teaching and learning materials, and also Food Service Program report. And the next Teaching and Learning Committee is going to be discussing library book process at classroom libraries in the That's very interesting. Since last meeting, I had the opportunity to meet with Superintendent Seibert and Ms. Landish to discuss the critical race theory, especially under other names, which isn't a good idea, and it's a nice sneaky way to get things into the curricula that parents do not approve of. So I had some ideas. Things as books are not used as much by teachers as they once were. Lesson plans are generally taken off the internet. This could be talked about in the teaching, learning, and I'd like to see lesson plans posted online for transparency. I'd like to see books reviewed by the board or a group of parents before purchasing. And this will assure no critical race theory by any name whatsoever, and no pornographic content in either. I would suggest that teaching and learning, put this on the agenda for discussion online, posting of lesson plans, and review of books before purchase. Also, the meal deal. I heard about that before the Finance Committee met, and I suspect that's why they talked about it quickly, through the news. A report came across that eight Waukesha schools were not serving breakfast. And in that report, they said parents were okay with this. Now, I'm sure some parents were not okay with it, but what amazed me is that the board seemed to be totally unaware.
30 seconds.
So hopefully, we can explore this, maybe do some surveys and find out if it's, what is the best way to go, and then have the board re-vote on this so that everybody is doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Lindsey, followed by Becky Gilliam. Welcome, Lindsey.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I ask that you will commit yourself to listen openly and without a response, judgment, or opinion about who I am or what group I might represent already formulated in your mind. I, in turn, am committed to speaking to you as individuals with unique and important experiences and perspectives, not as members of political parties or people with allegiance to particular ideologies. I do not intend to form opinions about who you are or label you in specific ways based on what I've seen, heard, or read from someone else. I'm a parent of two children that attend Rose Glen Elementary. I'm a former teacher for the school district of Waukesha. I am a former student and family advocate, an academic and behavioral specialist for Wraparound Milwaukee. I am the owner of Underdog Educational Support Services. I specialize in supporting schools across the country with diverse populations who are facing multiple challenges, including poverty, language access, adverse childhood experiences, and claiming refugee status, to improve teacher and student confidence, engagement, growth, and achievement in relation to literacy and math. I am very concerned about what I see as a growing intolerance for different voices and opinions in our Waukesha school and community, and because I work with many students, educators, and administrators nationally and globally in our schools and communities nationwide. I have no interest in assigning blame to individuals, as I think that's unhelpful. I would instead like to focus on how important I believe it is for people with diverse perspectives to authentically listen to one another, not just out of courtesy or a sense of obligation, but to truly attempt to find common ground on how we're going to move forward. To do this, all parties who are part of the conversation have to be heard. Limiting assumptions have to be set aside, and individual perspectives should be broadened and adjusted because of the new information that is learned. What is taken as common knowledge should be looked at thoughtfully and critically, because common knowledge to one might be entirely foreign to another. In recent months, there have been many discussions and actions taken as a result of those discussions to control the language and communication of teachers and students. It has been proven in published, evidence-based studies across multiple industries and sectors that organizations who lead with control often achieve temporary compliance from their members, but struggle with mediocre performance, high staff turnover, and disengagement of stakeholders in the long term. I do not intend to express anger or blame, but I would like to suggest and offer to help organize, if it is something that you are interested in
30 seconds.
Of some listening sessions throughout the community to better connect our board with what our community needs. I think there's been some divide and some disconnection, and I would love to see those meetings take place at the places our students are served daily, not in a building where there is a power differential between the people sitting at the table and the people in the chairs. I know that all of us want what's best for kids, and I very much hope to hear from someone.
Thank you, Lindsey. Becky, followed by Autumn Gilligan. Hi, Becky.
Hi. I'm going to stay up when Autumn comes.
That's fine.
Okay.
That works.
All right. Hello. When I was a healthroom substitute for the district during 2019 to 2020, and the 2020 to 2021 school years, I worked with inside Hadfield and Whittier, and I am a witness to the dedication the staff of these two schools has to their students. At these two elementary schools, there are children whose troubled home life caused behavior problems at school. There are children with specialized medical needs, and there are many children with IEPs who receive special education services. There wasn't a staff member who had contact with these kids, from the principal to the secretary to the special education aides, that did not know each student on an individual level. Disrupting these relationships by closing a school will be detrimental to the emotional health of these students. Due to a variety of sensory and processing problems, students with special needs, specifically those on the autism spectrum, are reliant on routine and consistency in order to make sense of their world. When my autistic kids were in fifth grade, their special education teacher spent time during the last months of school preparing them for the upcoming change, but the students at Hadfield and Whittier are not going to have this opportunity. There are several area schools that will potentially absorb the students from Hadfield and Whittier when the one closes. Now, there are annual IEPs that will be written by staff who are not familiar with the students. There are IEPs being followed by staff who are not familiar with the document or the student, and this affects the student's ability to learn. These students will not only experience emotional stress, but their learning ability will also be greatly affected. Hadfield and Whittier's attendance areas are in economically disadvantaged areas of Waukesha. Statistically, students from economically disadvantaged households are less successful learners at baseline. I understand this looks good from an economic perspective, but aren't our students more important than money? Saving money should not come at the expense of our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Autumn, followed by Rebecca Flaherty. Welcome, Autumn.
I'm going to speak while, okay? Okay. Go ahead. Hi. My name is Autumn. My name is Autumn Gilligan. I want to tell you that the teachers I had for special education are really good educators. I was diagnosed autism when I was four, and I don't know what will happen to me, or if I would have done well in school if I didn't have the teachers I had. I am worried if the school board wouldn't support teachers, and more teachers will keep leaving the Waukesha School District. Teachers, understand that all kids learn in different ways, because every kid has a different little learning pace. You can expect each kid to be the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. Rebecca, followed by Sarah Harrison. Hi, Rebecca.
Hello, Corey, is he up there? Last summer, Greg Deets was at three committee meetings and two full school board meetings where the lunch program options were discussed. He voted twice to return to the pre-COVID National Free and Reduced Lunch Program. After the second vote, a parent in our district contacted The Washington Post, which started a witch hunt that brought threats to our school board, their families, and our administration. Greg Deets caved to the national attention and in August voted to return to the previous year's all-inclusive Seamless Summer Option Program. With no previous mention of hunger or need at the eight schools who have never received free breakfast, Greg Deets showed up at the January Finance and Facilities meeting, admittedly sick with COVID, to lay the groundwork for an emotional election stunt that played out two days ago. Monday night at FNF, just one week before the just one week before the primary election in which he is up for reelection, Greg Dietz claimed that all schools should have had free breakfast all along. He claimed kids are going hungry, the district is losing revenues from the Cadillac Free Meal Program, and he blamed administration. Greg Dietz unfairly accused District CFO Darren Clark of being insubordinate. At Cory's strong objection to this accusation, Greg went a step further and said his comment applied to Dr. Seber as well. All board members in the room on Monday vehemently disagreed with him. If kids are going hungry, why did Greg Dietz wait 18 months to bring this to the board? Greg Dietz brought this up Monday as a tasteless, disrespectful campaign stunt intended only to open wounds and drive divisiveness in our community on a closed issue. Is he lying? Or is he just totally incompetent and did not know what he was voting on multiple times last summer? Shame on him for abusing his powers on the school board to boost his campaign. One more thing. So, Bill, at TNL last week, you asked us to look up the word proficiency in the dictionary, and I would think after 37 years on the board, you would know that we don't use the dictionary version of proficiency. We use the DPI definition of the word, which is in the DPI handbook over 1,000 times. Proficient in the DPI handbook means the student demonstrates adequate understanding of an ability to apply the knowledge and skills for their grade level that are associated with college content readiness. Since I have 30 seconds, I just want to explain something. Over many months.
Thirty seconds.
Students came up to this podium and spoke of deep depression, suicidal thoughts, and school being a war zone. I emailed all of you and asked counselors to have them check in. I was worried about them, as I'm sure you were. A 15-year-old started a rumor that I was outing students to their parents, which was then repeated by parents at this podium. So I wanted to give you context around that because I'm sure that's going to continue. One more thing. My daughter loves the cell phone policy. No issue there. She's worried about the schedule for next year.
Your time is up. Thank you, Rebecca. Sarah, followed by Erica Kuchansky. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sarah Harrison, mother of two SDW students. First, I would like to thank Mr. Dietz for standing up for all SDW children to be able to receive the free breakfast that is available through the Extended SSO program. Thank you for following the proper procedure, and thank you for not caving to the pressure when others would not take on the topic. Second, I was glad to hear from Mr. Clark and from Mr. McCaffrey that our records are now current, and we don't need to worry about missing out on title funds. That's very important. And it also means there's really no reason to oppose Extended SSO now because we're all in the clear there. Third, I want to express to you how important it was to me to come and talk to you all tonight. This is a little personal aside, but I have a meeting at 8:00 a.m. in Grand Rapids. So I will be driving through the night so that I could come and talk to you all about this because I'm very passionate about making sure we support our kids. So, think of me at midnight. I'll be chugging caffeine. The conversation around the Extended SSO illustrates that running a school district is a really complex process, and it involves looking at financial and fiscal responsibilities and remaining accountable to all of the stakeholders. Quality of education and the well-being of the children have to be our top priorities and have to be managed within the financial parameters. And as we've seen over the last months and weeks, those parameters are not always as well-understood as they may seem. And with that in mind, I'd like to talk about the proposed merger of Hadfield Elementary and Whittier Elementary. I'm not sure exactly what the financial data is that's the concern that's bringing this up. So I don't know if it's financially viable to keep both schools open. However, I do know that we should not combine these two schools. When we look at last year's DPI report cards, the two elementary schools with the highest percents of economically disadvantaged students were Whittier and Hadfield. Two of the three schools in our elementary population with high levels of students with disabilities were Whittier, second-highest percent, and Hadfield, third-highest percent. When we combine these two schools together, that puts the education of our students currently attending these two buildings at an even higher risk. If we need to do something to close one of these buildings, I encourage you to take a look at redistricting. Obviously, this will affect more students, but for a shorter period of time. The alternate of putting the two schools together has a long-term devastating effect on the students who would be in that combined building. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Erica, followed by Catherine Paulson. Welcome, Erica.
Thank you. At the Finance and Facilities Meeting Monday night, I outlined several ways in which offering universal free breakfast in our schools could help to close the achievement gap as well as decrease the behavioral and mental health struggles of our students. Unfortunately, no one other than Mr. Dietz mentioned these benefits as a reason to consider offering breakfast at the eight schools in our district that currently do not offer it. I would like to know why these benefits were not front and center during Monday night's discussion. I heard Ms. Reinichak place blame on principals for not reaching out to ask for breakfast to be implemented at their schools. I heard Mr. McCaffrey place blame on eligible families who did not fill out the proper forms to request free or reduced meals. I heard backhanded and passive-aggressive comments directed at Mr. Dietz as he advocated for breakfast to be served at all schools. Do all of our principals, teachers, staff, and families know that breakfast could be provided at their schools and, at least currently through the Seamless Summer Option Program, for free? If so, how do you know that they know this? If not, why have they not been made aware? Who should we hold accountable for not informing them? If all eight principals ask that breakfast be provided to their students, will you support them? I left Monday's meeting feeling utterly disgusted, frustrated, and most of all, sad. It was obvious to nearly any observer that the majority of our Board of Education values preventing potential waste and the feeding of children whose families might not need financial assistance more than it values ensuring all students, regardless of the economic status of their families, are well-fed and therefore primed for learning. Get off your moral and quite obviously, political high horse. We should feed our students because they needed to learn, not because they are poor. Waste, Ms. Reinichak, is a sign of poor implementation, not a guarantee of well-fed children. Why is policing parents who might be able to afford to feed their children more important to you than making sure students are well-fed? Why? Your job is to find a way to support the learning and academic achievement of all students in our district.
Thirty seconds.
Not to weigh in on your opinion of the federal tax policy. Decenter yourselves and do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Catherine, followed by Laurel Peterson. Welcome, Catherine.
Hello, Catherine Paulson, Waukesha resident, parent, and alumni. Little reflection moment right now. Monday's meeting ended with a request to grade SDW based on the audit. I want to start by asking all of you, how would you grade how things are going right now in the district? Just honestly, how would that be? My view, I see division, politics, power struggles. On the other hand, I also see passion, drive, and intentions to do what's best for our children. I'm here today to try to help flip the script. Let's show the rest of the world how people can work together even with differing views. Find the sweet spot of compromise and progress for our children. Let's break this nasty cycle and start leading differently. Over the years, society has changed, technology has changed, education has changed. Now it's time to also evolve as a school board. Just because you've always used certain standards to make decisions doesn't mean you should continue to utilize those same processes. Relevant example, should the same percentage of eligibility for free and reduced lunch be used today to determine, let's say, a breakfast is offered at a specific school? There are so many reasons at your finger, so many resources at your fingertips, such as educators, administration, counselors with years of experience in education. Take advantage of this. Utilize their experience to help innovate how you all work together and make the best strategic decisions for the current and future state. Today and moving forward, lead with empathy. Check your personal views and politics at the door. Open your heart to what all community members are sharing. Find a way to honor and respond with solutions. Be solutions-focused. This includes compromise. Structurally set some goals, up-to-date operating processes. Demonstrate how to work together, all of which are qualities of a sustainable and quality business. I'm generally concerned about the future of this district. Our reputation is not good. It's a hard pill to swallow, but it's the truth. The reputation has so many downstream impacts, and we can all agree that it may cause quality educators and staff to either leave or not apply to work at SDW. There's been so many beautiful opportunities over the past couple of years to come together as a board, and they've been missed. Bond on the commonalities and capitalize on the severity of thought. Solve for the issues at hand opposed to stating your personal viewpoints and shutting out a possible solution. Avoid highly politicized verbiage and statements. Try not to generalize and speak in absolutes, such as saying there is no stigma.
Thirty seconds.
This is not helpful nor realistic as it is impossible to know if this is truly indeed true, if this is true. Like I mentioned, I'm concerned for our children if the board continues down this path. It's not what's best for the kids. Please honor that and work together to correct, innovate, and lead. Take opportunities like the food concerns. Create something new that will show how creative this district can be, how we can find solutions to provide to all students. If you take anything away from this, please remember that you're here to represent the entire community. Lead with empathy.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Laurel, followed by Alison Kolinski. Welcome, Laurel.
Thank you. What makes a good school board member? In my mind, it all comes down to three things. The first is time and preparation. A board member must be present at board meetings as well as committee meetings and come prepared to those meetings having reviewed minutes and other documents. The next is a knowledge of and true interest in the schools in our district. Board members should be familiar with all our schools as well as the programs that make us unique. They should visit schools whenever possible and be a cheerleader for their success. Third, a school board member should act in the best interests of our students. They must vote not based on political affiliation but on what they think is best for young learners, even if that vote is unpopular. The good news here is that there are three great board members up for reelection this year, and all three pass these qualifications with flying colors. Bill Baumgart is our district's longest-tenured board member, and he's served in every role on the school board. He's been instrumental in the development of the dual-language program and other initiatives. Greg Dietz has experience as a board member, a teacher, a principal, a parent, and a citizen. He can literally look at the issues the district faces from all angles and then make informed decisions. Last but not least is Amanda Roddy. I don't know anyone who volunteers in our schools more than Amanda. This isn't mandated as part of her position on the board. It's just who she is, a kind soul and an unselfish public servant. Thanks to these board members for diligently serving our community and our schools. You may not hear it enough, but you are appreciated and supported, and we need your leadership for another three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Alison, followed by Amanda Anderson. Welcome, Alison.
Hello, my name is Alison Kolinski. I'm a sophomore at Waukesha West High School. This school year, I have attended every school board meeting that I have been able to and spoken at all of the meetings I have attended. For the first time, I considered not speaking at this meeting. I considered this because every meeting I feel as if I'm reciting the same words over and over again, having to re-explain the same points about how students are being harassed by adults, staff members, and peers, how your statistics are not showing true facts, how the sign policy is extremely biased, and how we are constantly being ignored and have our questions avoided. On the point of bias in the policy, only signs supporting equity are being removed despite the fact that the policy is for all signs seen as political. I've mentioned this many instances, I've mentioned many instances of bias in my previous speeches, and then I hope that you were paying attention to those. But more recently, me and one of my friends found a Confederate flag that had been allowed to continue to hang at West. And according to the West Principal, Mr. Pat, this flag had been hanging for the past 25 years. Please explain to me how a Confederate flag is seen as a non-political flag. However, a sign welcoming students is observed, is seen as absurd and too political to hang in classrooms. You keep saying how you're listening to students and doing the best that you can, but you aren't listening to students because if you were, you would have had a solution to this issue by now. Speaking of the solution, where is it? We were told that we would have, that you were going to have a decision, but that deadline keeps getting pushed back and back. And at this point, it feels like you were just hoping that one day we will all wake up and forget about this. But I can promise you that this will not be one of the parts of high school that I forget. I will remember this for the rest of my life, remembering that at just 15 years old, I was using time that I could be using to do my homework, hang out with friends, or just live my life in general. I'm instead using it to fight grown adults for the rights and safety of students in school, a place where we are supposed to feel welcomed and safe. We are again asking for you to do your job and actually listen to these students who have been begging you for a solution for this issue for months and for you to, instead of just giving us a deadline that would continue to be moved repeatedly for a reason, for a solution that can be put into actions in school. Please acknowledge that this is not a fight that we are willing to give up and that we will continue to speak at these meetings until a solution is put into action. we will continue to speak at these meetings until a solution is put into action. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Amanda, followed by Renee Messerschmidt. Welcome, Amanda.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know that the next two speakers are also in conjunction with myself. We all plan to honor the time limits, but we're just going to go in succession, if that's okay.
Similar as to what you did at Tino.
Yep.
That's fine.
Good evening. As a parent and a teacher, I cannot support the proposed closing and combining of Woodyer and Hadfield. I've already emailed you all and spoken on my biggest concerns with this, and while every part of me wants to fight to keep our building open, I feel the bigger fight is to demand accountability for whatever decision you make going forward. I, along with many of our school community, attended the Woodyer Listening Session. I was told that the presenters hoped to answer all of our questions, but I left the meeting with far more questions than answers. What stood out the most in the presentation were the words "hope" and "perhaps." The Oxford Dictionary defines the word "hope" as "a feeling of expectation and desire for a certain thing to happen." It also defines "perhaps" as used to express uncertainty or possibility, and further defines it as used when one does not wish to be too definitive or assertive in the expression of an opinion. The entire presentation was based on these two terms. What it was not based on was a solid plan of action by the administration and district leaders, a plan that does not fall only on the shoulders of the principals and teachers. One of the most important things to plan for at these two buildings is the staffing. I'd love to keep all the staff at both buildings. Every staff member has chosen to work at these schools and is heavily invested in our students. Most, if not all of us, are already aware of the challenges these two schools face. Currently, these two schools are the lowest-achieving performing schools in the district. They have the highest economically disadvantaged students, and with the exception of one other school, have the largest special ed population. Hadfield and Woodyer also account for almost 40% of all the elementary behavioral incidents in the district. It breaks my heart to even share this information publicly, because each student is precious, regardless of the statistics, and each staff member serves them diligently to meet their needs, but one cannot deny these facts. This combined school cannot be treated like all the other schools in the district. This would be a unique school with unique challenges. It has been said that the district will keep the two current principals, which is wonderful because they are both dedicated and amazing. However, it is of utmost importance to have a full-time behavior person who knows these students and the families, and can communicate with them to create solid behavior plans, a person whose sole focus is to help keep our school safe, help keep kids in the classroom so they can learn, and help foster relationships with families, so we are all working together to create a safe learning environment. It is also imperative that there are as many educational coaches and positions as possible to support teachers. More instructional coaches allows for more individualized instruction and helps to meet the students where they are and help them grow. I know that more staffing means more money, but money is already being saved if you combine the schools, and staff is crucial to our success. More staff also means more eyes, ears, and hands to help each of the potential 410 students. Another major concern that was partially addressed was busing. It was said that busing will be provided for those students living over two miles from their assigned school and to students who live on a dangerous route. It was also said that families can apply for busing if they have a special circumstance. Although I know that per DPI, this is standard busing, I also know that one of the biggest concerns expressed by families at this meeting was the ability for their children to get to school. Many of our families cannot afford transportation, whether it is purchasing their own car, paying for a city bus pass, or using the district's pay-to-ride option.
Thank you, Amanda. Renee, followed by Edison Messerschmidt. Welcome, Renee.
Good morning. Currently, one Woodyer, currently, one of Woodyer's church partners pays for our families who cannot afford the pay-to-ride option. However, the number of families who will need this will likely increase if students are relocated to Hadfield. I don't think it's fair to ask our families or our local partners to cover the costs of hardship created by our district. These organizations already give an exceeding amount to our schools. Aside from the cost of busing, there is the logistics of students walking. Amanda was curious how long it would take to walk from Woodyer to Hadfield, which is approximately 1.8 miles. Her and her husband walked at a brisk pace, and it took them 35 minutes. For any child, this walk would be a lot, not to mention, these kids would have to be trained exactly where to walk, as Hadfield is not on a main road. Not only was the time significant, but it was also only 19 degrees, and by the time they arrived at the school, the part of her face exposed to the elements physically hurt. Amanda and her husband were both fully dressed in appropriate gear. But imagine one of our students walking this route. Would they be fully clothed in all the winter gear? Would they even have winter gear? Woodyer gives these items out to students who do not have access to it, but it takes time and resources to meet the needs of every student. It doesn't just happen on a first cold day of the season, which means you will have kids walking to school who will not have hats, coats, gloves, or boots. According to the National Weather Service, at 19 degrees with a 5 mile per hour winds or less, a person is only advised to be outside for 30 minutes or less without the chance of frostbite. We have already proven that we can't make it 1.8 miles in under 30 minutes. These schools already struggle with students who are perpetually absent and tardian. Adding this additional walking to their day, especially on extreme cold and bad weather days, will only impede our attendance further. Another thing the district hopes to provide is solid before and after-school programs. While this would be wonderful for families who need it, it is not a guarantee. Both our schools have struggled with these programs due to socioeconomic barriers and financial concerns of families. Combine these schools, doesn't change, combining these schools doesn't change this. It is still a huge problem. It is extremely difficult to find organizations that want to provide our schools these programs, because we simply, there simply is not enough money. In addition, the behavioral issues that were already discussed impede staffing, specifically long-term staffing. Our kids need programs that can provide long-term staff, staff that can hold trust and make connections with, that they can make connections with. Currently, the program we have at Woodyer struggles with constant turnover due to these behaviors and perpetuates the problems because our kids cannot form connections with the ever-changing staff. But again, it is hard to secure a solid before and after-school program and the staff without the finances.
Thank you, Renee. Edison, followed by Vince Dutier.
These are only the three biggest challenges. There are also countless smaller ones that need to be addressed in a timely and adequate plan. Before the start of the school year, if we are to combine, such as a lack of parking and the unsafe playground at Hadfield, I believe the district has a responsibility to address these concerns and formulate a solid plan. Our district cannot make this decision based on hope. These things are needed to help this school be successful. 92 staff members and approximately 410 students rely on you. Hope is not a strategy, we need a plan. I implore you to hold this administration accountable for the, for the plan if you choose to support the combination of these two schools. In the words of Benjamin Franklin, "By failing to prepare, you are preparing to fail."
Thank you, Edison. Vince, followed by Samuel D'Amico. Welcome, Vince.
Good evening. I'm Vince Dutier, Waukesha resident and parent of a student currently enrolled at West. It's now been six months and still no sufficient response to the anti-inclusion actions that started last summer. Month after month, you've had students speak to this board and the committees about how this sign removal and subsequent actions from other students have hurt them. And tonight, you've now heard one student indicate she considered not speaking due to its apparent futility. However, you don't hear from students alleging that the inclusive signs hurt them. Evidently, the inclusive environment these signs were trying to foster last school year clearly did not negatively impact them enough to motivate them to the point that they would feel compelled to come speak in this forum. So let's act on what we've heard from those who are being hurt. The superintendent's letter from January 6th this year and what it directed was useless. It was tantamount to responding to a cry for help from certain groups with a hollow "all lives matter." Then it cited three policies about what not to do, discriminate her ass-bully, and a fourth policy for the consequences if you do. And then it asked teachers to go over these policies with their students. This is an incredibly insufficient approach to diversity. It does not say anything about how to actually make all students feel welcome, something we know will help them flourish. Before last summer, the administration at least allowed teachers to clearly display their belief in welcoming all groups of students. That was an example of a positive action that did not go against these four policies and could be part of building an inclusive environment. Something I want to point out tonight is the omission of the highly relevant policy, 2105.B. In that bullet, it states, "We believe that our diversity is a strength, and we will respect, value, and respond to the individual differences." I want to point out the actions, "respect, value, and respond." Those actions go beyond simply telling students they all matter and none will be discriminated against. Allowing teachers to respond to the realities of our community with a sign of support would seem clearly permissible, if not encouraged, in the context of this policy. I would think that any good organization that wants to show that it actually wants to make progress in the realm of diversity and inclusion should at least do some of the following: create accountability, measure progress, give credit where credit is due. Can the board step in to assure that administration is also acting on policy 2105B? Hopefully, no one on this board is against it.
Thirty seconds.
So let's respond to the individual differences that have been clearly shown by the students willing to speak to this board.
Thank you, Vince.
Welcome, Samuel. Good evening. Just to start, I'd like to touch on somebody else who brought up students who came here to speak. I think it's great that a lot of students have gotten here to speak in the past few months. I think parental representation, teachers coming here to speak is great, but if you want to actually look at who your policies are affecting, have our voices right here. Today, I'm here to speak about opposing the Woodyer closure plan, just a few notes I took while I was at the listening session. The first one is the transportation. The school district covers transportation by bus if you live outside of a two-mile radius. I walk about 15 to 20 minutes per day to school because I live within two miles, but we also don't have a car, so I'm not able to get a drive. It's about the same distance from Hadfield to Woodyer. I don't see making a second or third grader having to walk that very smart, and it was brought up that that would be provided with a fee. I don't understand making a family pay a fee to bus their children to school after administration had made a recommendation before hearing that family's voice on whether transportation would be a problem for them. I volunteer at Woodyer in the third-grade classroom every Tuesday and help in the school library a few times a week. There is not a lot of access for high schoolers to volunteer at Hadfield due to travel time and the distance in general. Taking that away from Hadfield would hurt the students there. Class sizes will increase at a 21 students per one teacher, student-teacher ratio. It's about nine students right now at Woodyer. It would combine around 45% of all special education students in one building, and the student population would be about 80% low-income. Consolidation of resources will not result in the consolidation of achievement. And something else that has been brought up, finances. When I talk about finances, we will be about $7 million over budget this year, give or take. This plan accounts for about $900,000 in savings, and we have yet to hear a plan about the other $6.1 million, not to mention the $300,000 or so we're losing to not serving breakfast to eight schools, but of course, nothing is free. March 9th, hope you make the right decision and vote no to close. Thank you.
Thank you, Samuel. That concludes this portion of our meeting. Moving on to our minute approval, we do have two sets of minutes for consideration, our January 12 regular board meeting, and also January 24th, an executive session. Do I so have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McCaffrey, signed by Ms. Roddy. Any discussion? Sue, please take the real call vote.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 9-0. Moving on to our communications and WEF report given by Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Mr. Como. The Waukesha Education Foundation Board of Directors met earlier this month, and Lynette Calmidge, as executive director, reported that the total WEF-held scholarships are now up to over $42,000 for this school year, and we're certainly thrilled with that amount of growth. WEF is appreciative, also of the ongoing Casual for a Cause program. 100% of all revenue raised goes into this year's grant total, and during the contest period, teachers in the district raised $11,022. South High School and Hillcrest Elementary Schools were the winners of the Go Casual for a Cause contest. Hillcrest enjoyed their WEF-provided breakfast in mid-January, and South High School will be enjoying theirs on Friday of this week. This is the second year in a row that Hillcrest won the elementary contest, and we believe the fourth year in a row for South. Because the district met the $11,000 goal, this will continue into second semester, and a new contest was launched for the school with the highest percentage of staff participation. Thank you to all, and especially Sue Enninger and all of the building secretaries that make this program run so smoothly. Speaking of grants, the WEF grant window will open on February 14th and will close on April 8th. Teachers and staff in the school district of Waukesha are eligible to apply, and information is available on the WEF website under the Grants tab. The 16th Annual Golf Outing will take place on August 4th at the Ironwood Golf Club in Sussex. Registration will open in April, and we are seeking sponsors now. You can check out the WEF website under the Golf tab for more information, and we hope to see many of you there. Finally, the Waukesha Education Foundation is seeking additional annual sponsors and has created a new brochure for this program. A copy is available at your desk, and we would appreciate you reviewing it and helping us by identifying any companies that you feel would benefit from supporting the organization, maybe your own employer, or maybe someone you know. If you need additional information or digital copies, just let us know, and we're happy to provide those, Lynette, or myself, or Mr. Montiel. And thank you for your continued support, and please reach out with any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert.
Thank you, Mr. Como.
Appreciate it. Moving on to our charter school and program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Joe. I have three very interesting, mostly interesting pieces to give you. The first one deals with our planetarium, which of course is our, part of our school district. This was a fun and educational event that took place at the Monday night of the jamboree a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago. We were presenting a program for families. The focus of that was to expose the kids to the sun and the planets, and to do that in both English and Spanish. An astronomer was present to give the technical sides of the story, and an interpreter, actually one of our graduates from South High School, would interpret some of those words in both English and in Spanish, to which everybody in the room had to repeat. After some teaching, teaching questions with, that were posted, and the kids put their hands up, came forward and got small prizes. Though I was one of there with the kids there, I was not able to participate in getting any prizes, so don't get that mixed up, okay? They then demonstrated the size relationship for each of us there, and including the kids were very interested in this. They demonstrated the size of the relationships between each planet and the sun. I had never had that, if I did, I forgot about it, but the amazing thing, Earth, think of Earth as a small soccer ball, think of the planetarium dome as the sun, and you can figure out how many Earths would fit into that sun, so don't go there. Okay, side note to that planetarium visit, which by itself was very exciting and interesting. The kids loved it. And again, that's the district providing for the community through the planetarium process. Side note, as we were leaving, I heard the man that was behind me walking out say that he and his family came up from Chicago for this. Needless to say, I had to ask him what that was all about. Well, it turns out, they have come up for some of our other planetarium shows because they think it's such a phenomenal situation. He speaks English, excuse me, he speaks Spanish and English, wants his daughter to do the same, but he currently lives in a very English-speaking community. He was flabbergasted when I described to him the bilingual programs that we're using in Waukesha. He just thought, "How can you do that? That's wonderful." So, planetarium, wonderful success for lots of people on January, what, it was 14th, I think. Another subject, short one, the STEM Academy. I attended the governance board last week at the STEM Academy. Just wanted to let you know, they have added members to their board and are back to the full contingent. It had dwindled down a little bit, but it's back to full contingent, but they will be looking forward as they could lose a member or two as the school year ends. Some of them, when their kids are done with the STEM program, some of the parents decide to walk, not walk out, but leave. But they will be ready to fill that. Relative to our academies over at South High School, I have some interesting information to share with you. FEMADE, F-E-M-A-D-E, is a subcommittee of the MADE program. That's the Manufacturing, Auto Design, and Engineering Program we have, which many districts do not have. FEMA is a subcommittee to that at South High School that is working hard to engage females interested in engineering. Recently, they had 40 females engage in a Q&amp;A with, with local female engineers from the SPX Corporation. Students learned about the skills needed to be successful in the workforce, ways to set themselves apart from their peers. Their next event will be Cooking with Chemistry, where female engineers will be demonstrating how to make edible cookie dough. I'm not sure if I'm going to go to that one. As the girls follow along, during each step, they will explain the science and the chemistry behind this, this food. That part is interesting. And then the Health Academy, a couple of points that they brought forward this past quarter, our Health Academy seniors were CPR-trained and certified for, from students, from, excuse me, from adults down to infants. And another item they presented, our Health Academy juniors were able to partake in a mock interview program where the local community partners asked them a series of questions that would prepare them for working, moving into the workplace. Prior to the interview, students created a resume and a portfolio of their accomplishments to share, excuse me, to share with their interviewer. This real-world experience was helpful for the students to not only engage with our community, but to prepare for life beyond their high school. And that would conclude what I have so far. This was some of the real positive things that we sometimes overlook in our district, and so many good things going on that people should be alerted to. That was a little bit of a speech there at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to our consent agenda. Mr. Clark, did we have any gifts to present tonight?
Yes, we do. Paul and Kathleen Olman gave $5,000 to Les Paul Middle School to use for math, science, and technology integration in the classrooms. Meadowbrook Elementary School, Arter Lukmanov, so I apologize if I didn't get that perfect, gave $1,989. This was a gift to honor a former Meadowbrook student. Mr. Lukmanov visited Meadowbrook in January to see his, to see where his American pen pal went to school before he passed away. The gift will be used to purchase multicultural literature for the students. Elite Electrical Connections gave $5,000. This gift will be used for the Waukesha South Football Program, and we have several gifts to the Waukesha South Band related to the parade incident. Bella Field Brew House gave 500, Marquez Enterprises LLC gave 1,782, Solomon's Pub and Grill gave 2,000, and Club 400 gave 800.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for your generous gifts. What a community we live in. Yes, Bill?
I think number two on Meadowbrook deserves a little bit of explanation, because that's a, that's an extremely interesting story.
Sure. Well, when it broke at the school district, I was there, and Dr. Seibert was there. We were kind of the first to hear about it from Jessica, the principal. And I don't know, you want to do a quick summary, Jim, of some of the main components? It's a long story. It could take another 15 minutes if you'd like, but he's better at condensing than I am, so.
We'll condense it. So, this young, the gentleman that Mr. Clark described is a Russian diplomat, and he reached out to, he actually came to Meadowbrook because he had had, as a young boy... out to, he actually came to Meadowbrook because he had had, as a young boy, a pen pal from Meadowbrook. And the young man that was at Meadowbrook passed away before this, before the pen pal relationship could continue. And when this man realized that, he set out to find him. And so he came to Meadowbrook to talk to Jessica, and there was actually one staff member there that did remember the young man that did pass away. And so they had a great talk. We just happened to be in the room when she was sharing the story, and then we shared it with you in the hallway. And then we helped Jake at the Freeman learn about it, and he wrote a really nice article on it. And this gentleman then made a contribution in the year, in the amount of the year that the young man died. That's why it's 1989. So, it's a very special story, and he has stayed in touch with Mrs. Berry since that point, so I think it's a relationship that will continue to grow. It's a very special story.
Here's a great story, and you should have seen Principal Berry's telling the story, very emotional, very happy, just connecting a lot of dots. It was, it was very, very interesting. Yes. Thank you, thank you for, you're better at Cliff Notes than I am, so I think it shows appropriately there. So, tonight, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity a little later. There were no expulsions for consideration tonight. And also tonight, we do have included items for approval with respect to policies and bylaws at our January 18th. Do you want me to go through these, Bill? Or, okay. January 18th, the 2022 Policy Committee, Policy 5512, dealing with entrance age, Policy Number 5520, disorderly conduct with respect to the student policy, 5720, student activism and expression, Policy Number 5880, public performance by students, Policy Number 9500, relations with educational institutions and organizations, Policy Number 2431, interscholastic athletics and district activities, and then Policy Number 5460, dealing with graduation requirements. Yes, Bill?
I think of those, most of them are slam dunks, it was just that kind of stuff, but I would like to just mention on the last one, because when you see graduation requirements, it's just a little bit different thing. It's what you can get your graduation credits for, and we have added two athletic events to the list. And that's what the change was in this particular policy. Boys and girls alpine ski racing and boys and girls snowboarding are now included in the sports that you can get, is it a half point, Joe?
Yeah, it's a half point of junior or senior PE can be replaced by these varsity sports.
And we had made that change many years ago from a by ed perspective, yeah, to include the sports and, yeah.
And that's all I wanted to add to this point.
Okay, fair enough. At this time, does any board member wish to have an item set aside for separate consideration? All right, Ms. Roddy, will you please present the agenda for approval?
Yes, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resource and Compensation Committee approved of three resignations, 10 retirements, three leaves of vacancies, three new or modified teacher contracts, and 48 administrator contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
I'll say it.
Second by Cory? Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, Amanda. Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Mr. Como. Three quick items for the board this evening. First, on the COVID front, our numbers have taken a very strong decline, which is great to see. We currently have seven staff cases and 69 student cases, so that's wonderful news. We're also doing much better with our sub-fill rate, and we've been over 75% nine of the last 13 days, so it's been much more sustainable. Second, our Government Relations Committee hosted a morning in the district for legislative and elected officials this morning. We were joined by County Executive Paul Farrow, State Representative Adam Nalen, and Mayor Sean Riley. We were able to showcase South High School, Banting Elementary, and Horning Middle. We were able to highlight dual language, Avid, the South Academies, and the South Culinary Program, as well as the various referendum updates. This was the first of various opportunities that our Government Relations Committee comprised of Ms. Reinacek, Mrs. Roddy, and Mr. Zanobia, along with Mr. Clark and I, will plan and offer to the community with the support of Mary Jo. And, third, I just wanted to quickly review with you the timeline for the consideration of the merger of Whittier and Hadfield, and we share this as part of our presentation. And then we have a number of resources on our website where you can see all of the presentation information, as well as the question and answers from the first session that we did last week at Whittier Elementary, and thank you to the number of board members that attended that with us. That was wonderful. We had a great session there last week. We look forward to, I'm giving just a little brief update here today. We look forward to next Monday night, we'll be at Hadfield at 6:00 PM, and then we'll be at Les Paul on Thursday, February 24th.
May I interrupt? Is it Les Paul one, oh, Hadfield is six, I'm sorry, I saw it five up there, and I, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, it's no problem, Mr. Baumgart. So, yes, six, and then we, the reason we do six is because at both Whittier and Hadfield, we do a staff session at four, and then we do a staff one at six, so it gives us enough time. In the last one, it'll just be a parent one, so we thought we could start just a little bit earlier. But good question. So, as I said, we have a number of resources that we'll keep adding to our website for community members and parents, and they're available in English as well as Spanish. And will, Mr. Clark and Dr. Cook and I look forward to this continued listening and continual learning, and our continued work with you as we walk down this path. So, that concludes my report, Mr. Como.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. And moving on to our committee reports, that's where the heavy lifting is done, a lot of discussion, debate. As you know, we rotate what committees report out first, and up this month, starting us off, is the Government Relations Committee given by Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Government Relations Committee does not have any action or discussion items to report on this evening, but I would like to just take a moment to build upon Dr. Seibert's comments during his report. This morning, we had a visit and tour opportunity for legislative and elected officials. I know you touched on, we highlighted Banting, Horning, and South on the topics of dual language, Avid, Flight, and the South Academies, as well as the South Culinary Program. Also, the referendum updates were the focus in this first opportunity. Our Government Relations Committee will be planning additional opportunities like this one to spotlight the school district of Waukesha. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report. The Government Relations Committee meets quarterly, and our next meeting will be scheduled for later this month or in early March.
Thank you, Ms. Reinacek. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee given by Ms. Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are no action items or discussion items to report out this evening. Our next meeting will be March 9th at 6:15 in Room 109.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to policy, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. Policy has no action items this evening. We have information discussion item, three, Policy 5500.01, Conduct in a Virtual Classroom. This is actually going to be, it's a new policy, it's not going to be a new policy. It is a new policy that's coming through the committee right now. We've had our first reading on it, we will be bringing it to a full board later after we've settled on it. What it really is, is dealing with all of the student behavior in a virtual environment. Right now, we don't have as much virtual, but it's still going to, and Eacheef could be, dealing with this. And that's why it's being brought forward, and we'll be presenting it in a future board meeting for final approval. The only other two items that are before us are technical correction items, which we do right at the committee. Quite simply, we had to add some state numbers on some of the things, and again, nothing that's impactful to the district. So, with that, I have nothing else to present.
Okay, these are discussion items. Does anyone have a question or comment on any of those three policies? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one action item and four discussion information items on the agenda this evening. The action item is approval of SIR funding for teaching and learning materials. The Teaching and Learning Department is asking to access roughly $162,000 of SIR funding to purchase ENIL and IRLA reading assessment materials. The committee discussed the process to be utilized in approving SIR-funded purchases. For example, these types of materials were not approved by a committee or board of education. Can they simply be ordered? Moving forward, we are recommending that until we better define our SIR funding expense budget, individual items like these will be brought through FNF and then to the board for approval. If an item needs to be reviewed by the TNL committee, for example textbooks, that review would need to be completed prior to being placed on the FNF agenda. Later this spring, a larger plan that outlines all the purchases in our initial package of expenditures will be brought to the board for approval. This should streamline the process. The committee approved the SIR funding for the teaching and learning materials, and I so move.
Is there a second to that? Thinking by Mr. Dietz, discussion? Dr. Piasik?
Thank you. I did share some of my feedback with administration on just the process related to this, so I wanted to share that with the board in terms of what I'm thinking tonight about this. Just fundamentally, I don't support the à la carte approach. I don't think that we should be bringing one-off things to FNF or to TNL. I think we need to have a strategic plan about what we're going to do with the SIR funds. The minimum that should go to learning recovery is 20% of that. That's a little over 2 million. That's a big number. I would strongly advocate for that to be more than 20%, but even if we were just operating at the minimum amount, I understand that expenses like this may be viewed as small, maybe just a drop in the bucket, but if we do this six, seven, eight times, that money could be gone. So, I think it's really important that we look at the resources that we have, we look at the problems that we want to solve, some of the learning losses that we need to close. How many students are we able to affect with the resources that we have? What would be the basis for believing that the resources that we're trying to procure will be helpful? And I do believe, I want to be clear, I support the recommendations and the requests, but I would like to see that as part of a plan, so we understand that we're making the best use of the resources that we have. And then what are the measurable objectives and deliverables that we have after we've actually spent that money? I personally believe that those SIR resources are there to make sure that we get our students back on track, and I understand we have facilities, we have other things that we want to look at with that. But without a master plan, it's difficult to say, and in this case, FNF would approve a learning recovery request that hasn't been discussed at TNL yet. And I appreciate what Mr. McCaffrey said tonight, that there may be a model that requires these things to go to TNL first and then come to FNF, but this also seems kind of tedious to me, that we would be going through this process with every transaction. What I would prefer to do is that we have a plan that outlines who we want to, how many students, and who we need to benefit from these resources, what that's going to look like. It doesn't have to be final, but I think it has to be directional and strategic, and then I think we would turn to administration to say, these are the things that we need to solve the problems that we've outlined and the measurable deliverables that we expect to get from those. While I understand and I appreciate that there may be some time sensitivity to procuring some of these materials, my concern again is that we do this six or seven times and it's gone. And it hasn't been strategic, it's been more transactional. So, what I'm asking for is a strategic plan around how at least the minimum 20% is going to be spent before we start spending those down.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Mrs. Zanobia?
Just a question on the follow-up to what Dr. Piasik just said. Is there a timeframe for when we have to designate these dollars for specific things?
Yeah, there are.
Right now?
There are a couple of times. SIR 2 has a due date, and SIR 3 has another due date, and they're different. Mr. Clark, do you want to comment on what those are? And maybe, maybe talk a little bit about what our approach has been so far, you know, what we've gone over in some of our workshops, and to date, to just kind of give that larger picture, because we do have some larger buckets that we've talked on. And part of that was we also want some flexibility, because we don't have all the information exactly of how this thing plays out. So, we wanted to have some flexibility in there too, so I'd like you to kind of talk to those big buckets that we have, the need for flexibility, but then also, you know, understand that we're trying to be strategic and be as specific as we possibly can with some of the suggestions, so.
Sure. I'll start with Anthony's question. SIR 2, we have till September 30th of '23, and SIR 3, we have till September 30th of 2024. So, we have, and as we've talked about at the workshops and at FNF, you know, these are funds that will probably be expended over two or three fiscal years. I don't, I don't know if we adopt a one complete plan. I think there's some goal setting and things like that. I think that all makes sense, but it'll probably be done in phases. And just so that people in the audience know, we, at our budget workshops, I presented what I called Version 1.0, just to provide some framework on how, of the big bucket areas, HVAC or facilities, learning loss, or what I think I called Student Services expenditures, but it was really just to give you an idea of what we could spend it on, and again, hopefully try to start framing the conversation. And in doing that, I also left 11% of the dollars, I think it was 11.2%, is unassigned, even under that plan, and I think, I think that's a good approach, and I think that can also be accomplished by approving these things in phases over several years, because we'll learn more, whether it's student results or facility needs, or whatever path we end up going. And then the, I'll explain a little bit about the agenda item on FNF on Monday. One of the goals was to talk about process. We had the two items that TNL or Jody brought forth had been talked about, and we had talked about them administratively as being part of that learning loss. So, really, if you read my executive summary or heard the conversation, it was, how do you want to go about, you know, doing this? Ideally, I'd like to have it be in bigger packages of things to streamline the process, because I agree, you know, the way we move, if we bounce it back and forth to two different committees, we could eat up two, three months and be waiting for some workbooks to be delivered or whatever the materials are. So, it was getting into that, how do we want to proceed? I also, we can certainly have you approve those tonight, but I also, I think it was in my executive summary, we can also wait till next month, because at some point, it does become a timeliness issue in, you know, secure them for the following school year. But, you know, going through that larger process, whether that's another workshop or a committee working on it to identify our goals and objection and measurables at the end of all this, I think is a good thing, not only for the board to help you make decisions, but so when the public looks back on what we've done, and they at least can capture what we were thinking at the time, whether we're right or wrong, that would all be good. So, again, it was kind of a test conversation to get this conversation actually started, so hopefully some good comes from all this.
Mrs. Zanobia?
Just to follow up to that, I, most of the public hasn't been to these workshops, and again, I agree, in the spirit of what Dr. Piasik said about more money going toward education, the 20% is a good start. I see that there's potentially a lot of this funding backloaded towards facilities, and especially, my biggest concern is with potential merger coming up with Whittier and Hadfield. Some of these funds may come in handy for streamlining that process. I haven't seen any plans of that effect, but I would think that would be an option. So, So I appreciate the explanation, and I certainly stand on trying to catch kids up, which is what this funding was intended for. I know the designation is 20%, but we have plenty of time to make a plan, but every year kids graduate, and we lose time for the kids that right now need to be caught up. And so I know these things move slowly. Everybody is doing a great job in the best they can, so I, but that's where my thinking is on this as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, just so everyone's clear on the learning recovery, the 20% is a floor. And it's up for us to revise the rest of it from there. So I don't want anyone to think that is the target or that we can't move from that number, because that's not the case.
Any of those big buckets were just a starting point for a conversation, is what, you know, we'd like you to all to realize. Other questions or comments? Dr. Piasik?
Just a clarification, then. It sounds like we would be, we would be more ready to start to expend some of the learning recovery dollars, and I think to Mr. Zenobia's point, there are students in the district right now who could benefit from some of this. So we're probably in a situation where I personally think if we took a slow step so that we could go fast, we might be in a better position so that we could move more quickly on the learning recovery if we had a plan. And I'm not asking for a computer program. I'm just more thinking like, what's the target population, the problem to address, and how do we quantify the benefit that we're aiming to achieve? So I know we've got a motion that's been seconded, but I think in the interest of maybe, and I know the TNL agendas are very, very full, but I feel like maybe there's an opportunity, and maybe Jody wants to speak to it, like how do we get that plan?
Yeah. I actually wonder if it would be better, from a plan perspective, to do this in a workshop, so we don't have half the board on one committee and half the board on the other committee, and then we're doing the volleyball thing back and forth. I think we should probably consider another workshop here. It sounds like, and we're just hearing some of the same things in our workshop, where we wanted to make sure, and most people are saying, let's talk about learning recovery. It's very important to us. We know that the other topics are too. But I wonder if we could have that plan ready for the learning recovery portion, you know, prepared in the next few weeks? Is that, is that a doable thing?
Just a couple of things. Yes, it can be ready easily. We have that plan on internal documents. So to your point, Dr. Piasik, I think we have outlined our focus areas, we have outlined the groups that we're going to be serving, the areas that we are prioritizing, so we can get that no problem to you. If it's in a board work session, I can easily also agendize it at the March TNL meeting. So it just depends on how you want to do it. Again, to Darren's point, we were kind of just waiting for guidance on the process in ESR III, so.
Yeah, and, you know, there was a, we got to start in FNF. I mean, basically, the thought was, there's a number of things that your department orders throughout the year that never gets approved, you know, essentially through TNL or FNF on an individual basis. It gets approved through the budgetary process as a whole. Okay? But there's, and as you know, textbooks and anything associated with the curriculum, all that does come through TNL and gets board approval all the time. So what I, I wonder if, do you, it sounds like you're pretty far along in this. Do you know if you have 20% identified yet or not?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Okay. So I'm thinking, what we might want to consider is to have the motion just taken off, taken off at this time, and that could be done by you retracting it, and who seconded?
Dietz.
Mr. Dietz, if you guys both agree to just not go through that portion now, we could add that into the overall plan, hold a workshop on it within probably a few weeks, so. Comments on that? Does that seem like a good way to go?
We don't have any urgency on ordering these material? We can wait for a month? Because that's what it's going to be.
Right, so I will say, ideally, to Anthony's point, it would be, it would be ideal, but I also will admit that many of these materials, because of budgetary constraints, my department has already had to purchase in phases, and you'll see that in the plan. So like many intervention materials, for example, are not equitably allocated across the 13 elementary schools, because we've had to say like, okay, we can purchase four this year, and next year we'll purchase the additional four. So that's a lot of times how we have had to operate in teaching and learning, because we have not been able to afford the entire purchase at once. That's why we're very excited about this money in terms of even the playing field across what is accessible for kids at especially the elementary level.
Can it wait a month, though?
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, it can. Okay, and we wouldn't be like losing out on the opportunity to purchase?
We won't be neglecting it.
You'll get here, this stuff will get here by the beginning of the next school year?
Oh, yeah.
If we wait a month?
Yeah, we'll be fine.
Okay, that's, I think that's what you were asking, Mr. McCaffrey.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need it right now. I'm asking basically, Jody, do we need it right now? Do we have to order it so we get it in a month instead of putting it off a month?
If I, if, it would be nice if you approved these two, quite honestly, right? It's an action item in front of you. That will not change. So you're in essence postponing these two invoices, of which I don't think the board will have an issue with. If you feel comfortable, to Dr. Piasik's point about that, knowing that it is follow, it's going to be followed with objectives and deliverables and students impacted, those things are in place, they just weren't part of the invoice presentation to FNF, but that's your call on that.
Ms. Reincheck?
Thank you. If I recall, Jody, one, or Ms. Landish, one of the, one of them is an assessment for all. So it seems like if there was a rush on that one, just to figure out where everybody is, and then the implementation of things, like if you think that that assessment is absolutely needed now, or to at least order it now, to just start figuring out where people are and then being able to help fix that, what do you say about the assessment?
Well, thank you for asking about that, Karen. Part of that assessment process does contain a component of professional development for our staff, so it's part and parcel. So it's important that when you onboard either new curriculum or new assessment, that you have the training that is available with staff, so they feel competent in, you know, basically giving the assessment. So that is a process that doesn't need to be rushed. So again, it's, it's not going to make or break us if we table it for another month, if, to Mr. Como's point, you want a board work session. My only wonder is then, out of the board work session, does it come back to like a TNL committee for approval for the strategic plan? Because the board work session still isn't going to garner us a vote around a strategic plan moving forward, so we'll still need a board vote at some point.
Well, we could have a special meeting instead of workshop, and we could have it agendized for possible action. So that way, we could go through the special meeting, have our discussion. If we're feeling comfortable at the time, we could have a motion come forward, and we could vote on it. If we feel like we need to have more time, we could just not vote on it. So, I mean, there are a couple of different options here.
I want to say something, but I'm not sure that I can, just because I got something in my throat, but.
Oh. I thought you were going to yell at me or something.
Give me some time. Somebody ask a question. We do have a lot to do in the next month.
Yes, we do.
We have listening sessions, we have a lot to really work through procedurally. So, you know, the idea of a work session or a special meeting, I'm concerned that that may not get the attention that it deserves. Excuse me. I'm going to stop.
Okay. Other discussion on, unless there is a motion on the floor?
Well, listening, I do agree that we have an awful lot of stuff in the next couple, in the next month. We have an awful lot of things going on. And if I'm interpreting this right, we could at least approve that small amount that we're starting with, because it's going to happen anyway, one place along the way, so maybe we should leave the motion in place.
So what is the total dollars in front of us? 162,000?
Two thousand.
You know, what is that portion of the minimal 20% of our total funds that we're earmarking for learning recovery?
7%.
7%? Was that in the report, too?
No, Dr. Piasik.
I did the math.
Oh. Our mathematician, our local mathematician. Okay, thank you. You know, so I guess that's, that could be the discussion, is are we comfortable with approving 7%? And again, 20% is a, it's a floor, not a ceiling. So. Any thoughts? Because there is a motion on the floor, so we'll continue to vote on that if, if there isn't a rescinding of that or some other motion made or amendment made to that motion. All right. We'll move to the vote, the motion that's on the floor. It's to approve ENIL and IRLA. Couple of things that were reported out on by Superintendent Landish on Monday, for a total of 162,000 of the ESR II funds, yes?
Thank you. I apologize. I needed to get my voice back. Just one comment or clarification I wanted to make with Mrs. Landish. I had requested that the learning recovery discussion be on the TNL agenda. Are we planning to do that in March?
So, yes, you request, I can't remember where you requested that. So I did put that huge outline in the board packet on Friday. That was my first attempt to give the board the comprehensive overview of what all of our schools were doing. That is currently not agendized in March.
So we have new test scores that we could be considering at this point, too, as well, right? Winter?
Well, we have our winter map, right. Those, because the window just closed, we can't turn that around for the March meeting, but it is on for the April meeting. The key performance indicator that we're reporting out on in March at TNL is the advanced placement performance indicator. I also have our new second quarter grades were just posted at the high school level, and so I did a data pull of the failure rates at our high schools for second quarter as compared to last year's second quarter, so that will also be in your board packet this Friday. So that data will be available for you.
Maybe just one other clarification then.
Sure, go ahead.
At the FNF meeting Monday, I think you mentioned that the plan was to kind of come back month after month with new requests. Given what we've had, what we've got in front of us, given that it might be April before we talk about test scores and, and learning loss recovery, I feel like if we do approve these two items here tonight, we may lose track of the strategic conversation down the road. So there's pros and cons. I want you to be able to move forward and trust that these are a priority, or they wouldn't be coming. But I wouldn't support taking this approach for all future items, and so we're right back where we started from, right? Either we've got a long delay until we can find time to do this, or we're going to be, you know.
Yep, and I heard you, and I think we have a lot of heads bouncing around here saying that we do want to take that more of a strategic approach and have a holistic understanding at least of that 20%, if not, it's greater than 20%. And I think we all have been, and I can't say all, but I see heads nodding saying that learning recovery is probably the most important topic that we have. So I would be committed to, you know, figuring out whether it's a workshop, a special board meeting next, something where all of us are getting together and focused on this. It could be, it could be a topic that we have at, you know, at a board meeting, too. It doesn't have to be a special meeting. So there's a number of different ways Dr. Seaborn and I can, can talk through what we feel is best, and we can see if we can nail some dates down and, you know, take it from there. So like, I mean, for example, it could be, it could be under general business at the next board meeting. We could do that. It might be a very, very long meeting, especially if we're voting on, you know, some of the, the merger of Hatfield and, Hatfield and Whittier. But, you know, so we would, we would discuss what we think would be possibilities. Yes, Ms. Landish?
Thank you, Mr. Como. I just want to verify that I could absolutely put this on the teaching and learning agenda and be prepared for the board to take action on it at our March TNL meeting, if that's what the board wants for the process. I was just set up to bring the purchases through FNF, because that's what we started to talk about, but I can absolutely bring this in March with a strategic plan, number of students impacted, et cetera, and have it all available in one package, if that's what the board is wanting.
Questions or comments on that? So it sounds like you're prepared. Okay?
Ms. Landish, would that be an action item?
I believe, yes, the board would need to, I believe it would have to be an action item, because then in essence, you're approving the subsequent purchases that are outlined in the focus areas.
And then it would come to the full board through the committee process, you know, the committee report out process. Just like this has come through TNL. And the reason why this came through TNL is this is just, is one of those purchases that typically isn't covered in a TNL discussion. So. We still have the motion on the floor, though, for us to approve $162,000 of, this would be ESR II funds?
ESR III would be part of it.
It would be ESR III? Okay. Sorry. I get those two mixed up. There's only two to get mixed up.
Right.
All right.
So to clarify, we're in agreement, it sounds like, that if we were to vote on this item, which we're about to vote on, we're not going to bring other one-off items through the same process? The remaining would be?
I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable in saying what I heard was that we wanted to have things packaged together and not piecemeal. Yep, I.
I just, depending on how long the board takes to agree on a plan, if we take four months to figure out what the plan is, and we have time-sensitive things, I guess I'd like the right, or reserve the right to bring that forward, saying if you want this for, you know, I don't think the plan probably will take that long, but I just think that'd be the only scenario I think.
Mr. Clark, I think that's fair. You should warn us if we're up against deadlines, whether those are practicality deadlines or, you know, statute or federal law deadlines that are.
I'm not overly concerned if this takes.
Driving us. ESR regulations, I'll just kind of lump it in, ESR regulations. You should make us aware if we're up against a timeline. Yep, absolutely. Okay.
I got one more question.
Yes.
Jody, the stuff we're voting on this evening, in a month from now, it wouldn't be omitted from the list, right?
Correct.
Right. So, let's vote on it.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear your question.
I just asked, Jody, is if in a month's time, when we get to the process, would this have any possibility of being left off the list? Could that be useless to vote on? And she said no, it'll still be on the list in a month.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? And let's take, take the vote, Sue.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 9-0, and we will figure out what that process looks like based upon our discussion, and for sure, we will have a package. our discussion. And for sure, we will have a package coming forth for TNL's consideration. And we can still let the TNL meeting continue to talk on, you know, what, what the next month or two looks like too. So I mean, we, we, we don't have to be restricted. This process, we've, we've never had to go through this. We've never had ESIR funds before. So I don't mind if it's, evolves over time is I guess what I'm saying. So I think we made some improvements in our discussion tonight. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. McCaffrey.
That concludes my action items. My first discussion information item is the food service program report. The committee discussed the summer seamless option food service model currently in place in our district. The committee has asked for follow-up data, which the administration will provide at the next FNF committee. And this is a discussion item, if there's any discussion.
Mr. Dietz?
Um, just some additional information I want to add from Monday's meeting that we had. Back in May and June, Mr. Clark asked the board to get involved in the decision to look at what we would have for a lunch program for this current school year. Because he, he had made the decision during the 2021 school year and felt that it was important to bring it, bring it to the board. It was the recommendation of administration to implement the seamless summer option program. And that was at the August 31st meeting, where it was voted on and approved five to Parents were never specifically notified that their schools were not getting it, getting the breakfast program, the eight schools, which include Meadowbrook, Summit View, Bethesda, Rose Glen, Hillcrest Prairie, Randall Stem, and Saratoga Stem. They were never officially notified through any sort of communication. At the district level, on those schools' websites, there was information that says that the breakfast program is not being offered at these sites. That wasn't done by the schools. That was done at the district level. And from what, you know, people have presented, and what we've heard some of that tonight, there are a number of struggling families in these attendance areas as well. And many students from these areas do come hungry. It's been fortunate that our PTOs and PTAs have picked up the slack. Some parents have donated money to offset kids coming to school hungry. And we know that hunger is a factor when kids are attending, if they're attending. Maybe they're not attending because of hunger. But it also affects their learning and their Administration was asked to send a parent survey to these eight attendance areas, which they agreed to. So that should be forthcoming. The estimated three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I think is a hard hit for us, especially when we're looking at cutting our budget between four and seven million dollars for next year. Even though the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in funding could not be used to replace anything that's on the list of cutting, other than, it could be used for improvement of cafeteria space. It could be used for equipment in the cafeteria. The one I like best about excess in that particular fund is that it can be used to enhance the lunch options and the breakfast, breakfast options for kids. And if you've seen those lunch and breakfast options, I think you might agree that those need to be enhanced. Not the most appealing sometimes. So, you know, I think it's, I'm glad that we brought it up. I, I did go through the chain of command. I had discussions with Dr. Clark, or Mr. Clark, excuse me, and Dr. Seabert on two or three occasions. And I didn't feel like it was getting anywhere. And so I brought it to finance and facilities where we discussed it last week.
Any questions or comments on this topic? Okay, Mr. McCaffrey?
Thank you, Mr. President. My second discussion information item is the 2020-2021 audit report. Each year, school districts are required to have a financial audit conducted upon the completion of their fiscal year ending June 30th. Wendy Unger, CPA, partner from Baker Tilly US LLP, presented the 2020-2021 financial statements. There were no internal deficiencies to report to the board, nor were there any compliance issues to report. The complete 2020-2021 audit results will be posted on the district website tomorrow morning, so members of the public can access this information. Is there any questions about My next discussion information item is the district fundraising. Kyle Lemieux, Brian Schley, and Dan Schreier were in attendance to discuss the fundraising process for athletic facilities. Since the last meeting, they have inventoried the district's facilities, started exploring funding options, reviewed the five-year capital plan, and refined the process for project selection. If a project and funding plan is identified that is outside the scope of the district's normal maintenance and repair work and budget, it will be brought to the FNF committee for consideration. The purpose of this ongoing dialogue is to make the committee and board aware of these conversations and to provide a structure for them to work within.
It's also a discussion item? Any comments or questions? Mr. McCaffrey?
Thank you. My final discussion information item is the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget and all other funds as well.
Also a discussion item?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next meeting is on March 7th at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Moving on to teaching and learning, given by Mr. Dietz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held last week, February 1st, 2022, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. We have one possible action item this evening and four discussion information items that appear on our agenda for teaching and learning tonight. Our one possible action item tonight is a discussion and possible action regarding overnight field trips for international travel. Two previously approved international trips by the board were brought back to the board for discussion and possible actions as the trips involved are currently at a Level Four, which means do not travel advisory, to the countries of Canada, Austria, and Germany. Both trips are planned to take place in June of 2022. Costs and refunds for families were discussed with chaperones, and it was recommended that a decision be made by the full board at our meeting tonight as to whether or not the trips should go on as planned or to be canceled. And that was basically to be fair to parents and to the students involved. Administration at this time is recommending that any non-essential international overnight travel be put on hold, other state national competitions, other than state national competitions for sports and clubs, for the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year, and that no non-essential overnight international travel be considered until the fall of 2023-2024 school year. So this is really an item about international travel. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Landish if she has any other additional information to share.
Mr. Dietz, you did a nice job. I just want to mention, thank you. I just saw my chaperones walk in at nine, nine forty-five at night. So thank you, Jennifer and Jamie, for being here. We've asked them to be here for the board if, if you had any questions. Again, just to reiterate, the reason this is sitting here, why it is, is because it was just a discussion item only, agendized at the last month's TNL meeting. And because we wanted, we had sensitivity around the refund issues for sure for families should the board make a decision. And so this was the best place to expedite the decision-making process, so families would know. If we waited all the way until the March TNL meeting, there would be more financial repercussions. So that is why it's here for you tonight.
Okay, so we'll open it up for discussion and/or any possible action items. Action items can be presented at any time, you know, during our discussion. So we'll start the discussion out. Anyone want to begin? Mr. McCaffrey?
So, we're going to ask to approve or deny this?
We're, the recommendation is from administration to not approve and to have a hold until the fall of 2023-2024 school year for international travel.
Okay, so the vote would be to cancel all international travel for the rest of this year and, or next year?
I think we have two trips scheduled currently, right, Ms. Landish? And we don't have any yet for next year.
Okay, but we're going to not allow any for next year?
That's if this went through as a motion?
No.
That, that would be correct. So again, like everything that the West students highlighted today actually would have been fine because everything they mentioned was all state to state, right, travel. This would put a hold on non-essential international travel that no applications could come forward for consideration until the fall of 23-24. The only two outstanding trips we have are the two that are in front of you this evening.
So those, if we vote yes on this, on the administration's recommendation, these trips will be canceled and there will be nothing coming forward for next year? Correct?
Correct.
Excellent.
And just to be clear, my understanding, and I, I wasn't present, but I did get a chance to watch the TNL and the discussion, the TNL meeting and discussion on this. The two, the two trips that were approved previously by the board, those, those could be, the parents could and the groups could decide to reapply after, after the June 2023 hold out, or the.
They could. I mean, the one trip in particular has already been postponed two times.
Right.
Both, both trips.
Both trips. Thank you, Jamie. Both trips have been postponed. They're on their first and.
So, so there's two, there's two groups of students who have been fundraising, who have been planning to go on one trip to Germany, one is to Canada. They have different challenges and similar challenges. So that's what a lot of the discussion was at the TNL committee meeting, was trying to find out the facts of what has been done by those groups, how many students are going, how much money has been raised. And that's where, since this wasn't agendized for action at the TNL meeting, one of the things that we found out was if this board chooses to put a hold on any international travel through June 2023, these students could potentially be out some money. And that was a good, good part of the discussion.
It's June 2024, right?
Hmm.
Says right there.
Oh, the June, the hold is through June 2024?
Until the fall of 2024. So you would, they wouldn't be able to go on the trip in the summer of 2023. Right. So they can't reapply for these trips if we vote to cancel or not allow any non-essential international travel, right?
Again, in the example of these trips, if they were to reapply, the first summer they would be eligible is 24.
Is 24.
You're exactly right. Patrick.
So they would not be able to.
Okay, so it's through the summer of 2023?
Yeah, it's.
Where the hold, the recommended hold.
It says until the fall of the 2023-2024 school year, but these, these occur in the summer.
Okay.
So it'd be the summer of 2024.
Okay. Is there a reason, is there a reason why administrations chose the, the fall of 2023 and not at the end of the 2023 school year?
I'll say, just in, in when Dr. Cook and I were talking about this specifically, it's, it's beyond the COVID and pandemic restrictions. We continuously look at the, the travel websites in terms of just advisories in some of these international countries. And there is a lot of political unrest happening. And so beyond COVID, there is huge political risk and, and things happening internationally that in essence would subject our students and people traveling into that area.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Baumgart?
I would assume.
Don't, all right. Wait. Go, go ahead, Bill, and then we'll have Corey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll let Bill go first and then Corey.
Okay. You know, this would be, this would be passed by the board. And if something happened that everything was just perfect, I don't believe it's going to happen that way. But if the world were perfect in the year 24, we could always rescind it as a board. Correct? Correct. I just wanted to make that kind of clear.
Mr. Montiel? Sorry, there's a little bit of a delay. So I kind of, you hear me two or three seconds and then later, and then I, I don't get you for two or three seconds later. So just, just chime in whenever.
Not a problem. Thank you. I believe we all got an email from Ms. Corey outlining her family's, you know, desire to go on this Quebec trip. I understand the issue with COVID. I also understand Ms. Landish's concerns about local unrest. I would note Dr. Fauci came out, I think today or yesterday and said, we're coming out of the, the highest point of COVID, which is good. The local unrest, I can't imagine too much is going to happen back by Europe. But I understand, these families have been fundraising and spending so much time, and these kids have been looking forward to these trips for years. If it is in fact, we vote tonight and it basically makes these families not have these trips until 2024, possibly, I just don't see why we would make that decision now that would have such an impact on those families for so long. They're the people that are going. They're the ones who are lacking by the term risking their own kids. I think they're best suited to decide whether they send their kids themselves on that trip. So I don't support the administration's recommendation to stop that. I think it should be left as an option for those families and those, those students.
Okay. Mr. Zanobia?
I guess my questions are, what are the, what are the real issues here? Is it that we're most concerned about someone getting COVID and getting quarantined in a foreign country? Is it that we have some liability or something with these kids going as a school district? I mean, to, to say there's a Level Four do not travel advisory, there's a Level Four do not travel advisory everywhere. And if you look at Canada and Germany and Austria, they say there's a Level Four coming here, basically. So everybody's saying the same thing. Don't go anywhere because of COVID. And if, if the people, the, the teachers, the parents, and the students are all on board with going, and they've done everything that's been asked of them for the last two years in applying for these trips, I, I don't see a big reason to stand in the way of that. There was a trip to Hawaii. I understand that's in the United States. But it's, you know, eight hours by plane, just like Germany. So if someone were to have gotten stuck there, it would have the same issue. So I'm trying to understand what's, what's really at stake here. You know, if, if all of them are on board and it's their choice to go, they've raised the money, open the hand, why you would say no? And not only now, but for the next year and a half. It's, I may disagree with some people here. Europe's getting more lax in their COVID restrictions. Germany and Austria are the exceptions. But Canada's been very interesting lately. So who knows? I think it'd be great to go on both trips, but.
Ms. Reinacek?
Thank you. Can we change the recommendation just to, like, come back, to put a pause on it until this time next year? Just only, only put it on hold one year, as Patrick was saying, to just not put it to the fall of 24? Because then most of those kids are graduated, or some of them, I know. I know there's a lot of different ages of kids going right now because of the, the delays. So can we change it to just be delayed one year?
Technically, there isn't a motion on the floor. So any motion could, could be made. What I would want to make a comment on that. Nobody foresees, foreseen this coming. And this board had voted at one time to essentially stall trips. And it was primarily due for safety reasons. And I know that, um, the chaperones and the students were aware that there, there's always, there's always a chance that the board could stop a trip from going if we felt it was unsafe. And we've, we've been through this one time. And unfortunately, you guys are getting to be experts at this. Maybe, you know, maybe it would help the members of the board who did not hear from the chaperones. Maybe we should have the chaperones talk a little bit on what they've shared with, um, with the T, T and L committee. And I would say you could give us some of the, the facts that you presented at the T and L meeting. And you can also talk to some of the complexities, um, you know, of going across the Canadian border and coming back. You know, there was, there was some information that we were privy to in, at T and L. Would you guys be comfortable hearing some of the chaperones? I mean, we normally schedule presentations, but they're here to answer questions. The other route for us to go is to ask specific questions. And would you be okay with them coming up and answering? And maybe that's the better route to go, is for us to ask specific questions and then have them as a resource.
That's fine.
Yes.
You okay with that, Cory?
Yes, sir.
So we'll let the questions drive whether or not the information comes from the chaperones. Dr. Piesic?
This is Roddy, actually.
Okay, Ms. Roddy?
Yes, thank you. At the T and L meeting, there was discussion about postponing or canceling. There was a financial impact on one or the other. Would you please explain that to the full board?
Would you come, would you come up to the podium?
Is it automatically on?
Yes.
Okay, good. Hi, I'm Jenny Raff. I am one of the chaperones for the Canada trip. And, um, the, can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. There was a difference in postponing the trip and canceling it. What was, what were the impacts of the two options?
So our trip has been postponed one other time, like Jody alluded to. So we were supposed to go last summer. Our travel company kept our pricing the same for postponing one year. And they have also agreed to keep our pricing the same to postpone one more year and to go next June. Therefore, if families wanted to continue being a part of that trip and just postponing, they would not lose any money at all. If they chose to cancel of their own accord, they would lose six hundred and twenty, well, they would get everything back except for six hundred and twenty dollars. Whereas if we canceled as a group, um, they would, everyone would get a full refund except for four hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryancheck? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yeah, since it's two different trips, um, the Germany trip.
Yes, Ms. Stringer.
Yes, I'm Jamie Stringenberg, orchestra teacher at West. So for the Germany and Austria trip, um, if we have a postponement, which just like the French Quebec trip, we've, we've already postponed one year and it was the same situation where they kept the pricing the same for the year. If we postpone an additional year, there's the chance that, that students would have to pay, you know, if like the cost of admission to this museum went up or whatever, like they might have to pay a slight difference in that. But otherwise, um, the, the cost remains pretty much the same. However, if we cancel, um, if families took out, they had an opportunity to take out, like, uh, cancel at any time, um, and they would get all of their money back. But if they did not take that option, um, they would lose five hundred and ninety-nine dollars right now. Or they would get everything back except five, five hundred and ninety-nine. I do have additional documentation that I didn't have before. If anybody would like me to share that, I don't know if, if we get to that point, if you'd like anything else from me.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Roddy?
No, thank you. That answered my question.
Ms. Ryancheck? Or I'm sorry, Dr. Piesic and then, okay. Ms. Ryancheck?
Thank you. I had just, um, written some notes as I watched it. And I, it was, um, they would lose the four hundred and fifty before April. If, they would lose four hundred and fifty, um, if they told them before April fifteenth, is what I wrote. But almost half are fully paid.
Is that the Quebec trip?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're on April fifteenth deadline, which is why we needed to talk about it. Almost half are fully paid. They postpone, they'll get the two thousand nineteen prices and will not lose the money. Also puts the vaccine requirement in the hands of parents instead of the Canadian government. The oldest students would just finish their junior year. Only people losing money will be those who opt out. Does that sound correct? No?
Yeah, basically. I mean, there's, the considerations are the vaccination requirements that Canada and the United States has. But in this case, it matters for us that it is in Canada. So you have to be vaccinated to be able to go into that country as a foreigner. And the other side of things are the United States requirement that, um, people, citizens returning to the United States have a negative COVID test within twenty-four hours of coming back. So then that would mean that if anyone, any traveler, whether it's an adult or a child who may test positive on that test that we take within the twenty-four hours, they would be required to quarantine and Canada would not be able to return to the United States until, um, a period of five to ten days.
Anything else, Ms. Ryancheck?
Uh, just a follow-up. And if it is a child, that child does get to stay with their parent in Canada.
About half of our kids are traveling with parents or other family members and about half are not. They're just going with us as the chaperones. So one of the concerns that we had was the liability issue of things. And we were talking about policies that may or may not exist in the board right now because this is a new experience for all of us as to what would happen. Because if a child was isolating, clearly they would have to be in that room by themselves, um, the whole time. So if their parent wasn't there, that would be up to the board to have a policy. I think from what I heard of the, obviously not international. Hawaii trip, there was some kind of document, I think, that you guys made for the parent would sign if, if, you know, they needed to quarantine and then the parent would come stay with them. So I, I don't know, like, that's, that's not my decision to make, but I would, I would think that would be a big consideration.
Thank you.
Can I speak for the Germany trip as well in, in terms of that? Um, I did ask my travel, our travel agent or consultant about how often that has happened, um, that a student has had to isolate. And so for World Strides, they've had seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy travelers since January of last year. And point zero eight percent, um, of their travelers have been a confirmed positive case. So, I mean, it's a very small percentage that that's happened with. So I, and I said this in the T and L meeting, that like I feel very confident with the, the mitigation that our, um, company has in place and the requirements of, um, of all of us who, who would be traveling. But as, as far as if somebody is isolated, um, we have only ten students who are going on this trip. It's a very small group and we have four adults. So, um, one of those adults would stay. We would not have a parent come, but it would be one of those adults, um, one of, one of the teachers.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Ryancheck?
No, thank you.
All right. Dr. Piesic?
Thank you. It's pretty clear to me that these are all kind of different issues. So I think we should probably consider them differently. What I'm hearing in terms of a small high school group where there's even an opportunity to sub in students for students who may opt not to go, is different, I would think, than a middle school group that's a large group. I am concerned about the, the, the age, the age range now in this middle school group, which is turning into like, I think, eighth graders and juniors or it's a pretty big gap.
They, um, there will be some who will be just finished with eighth grade, so that's about fourteen years old, and some who will be just finishing their sophomore year. So, yeah, that age range.
Okay, so thank you for that. And, um, the other thing, and I can appreciate that it's probably a rare instance that, um, this might happen, but it will happen. I have firsthand knowledge of people who have been randomly selected at the Canadian border to quarantine just because. Like, we pick you, you quarantine and we'll test you, you know, every few days and see how you do. So I am probably more concerned right now about the large group of younger students in and out of Canada than I am about the small group of high school students in and out of Austria, Germany. With that, I do fundamentally agree with a lot of what Mr. Zenobia said. And that is, um, parents have to make these decisions about what they're comfortable with, with the one exception that these are board-sponsored field trips. You know, that it, it's not like we're just saying, okay, good luck. You know, hope you don't get quarantined. We really are responsible. And even if parents are signing waivers that they're going to go pick up their kids, we're, we're making a decision that we're okay with this. I am okay with parents making decisions for their children, but I am not okay sending other people's children into countries that they might not be able to return from for a week or two. So, um, it, this is a tricky one. And what I'm really sensitive to is the fact that students have done fundraising based on a decision that the board made for them to carry on down this path. So I think the decision that we make about what happens next with these trips should be keeping both safety and, and cost in mind. Honestly, I think this comes down to there are some vaccine considerations that will, um, probably prohibit some students from going or limit the experiences that those students can have. And that's a decision that they need to make with their family. But we've, we've not required that as part of participating in school-related activities. And I know that was a major issue with, you know, with the Hawaii trip. So, um, related to future approvals, you know, I, I think it's probably in everybody's best interest if we just hold on for a little while. Because I suspect things are going to change. But related to these two trips, I, I do see them differently. And I see the risk associated with these two trips differently. And the final thing that I will add, and this is probably for future consideration as well, it does seem highly dependent on the travel agencies that we're working with, how much financial liability and risk that families are expected to take with these trips down the road. And so I think we have to be really deliberate about the organizations that we, that we work with or that we contract for these trips in the future. Because we're continuously going to be looking at variables like this that we can't control. And it would probably be more about civil unrest or, or safety and not necessarily COVID in the future. But, um, you know, being tied to these trips a year, year and a half ahead of time is a big financial burden when we're supporting four and five thousand dollar field trips, which I think are just not accessible to a lot of kids in our district. So, um, I don't take lightly canceling when we've got major financial obligations on the table. But I also don't take lightly having kids stranded in another country for a couple of weeks.
If I may.
Yes, Cory.
Thank you. I certainly understand your, your points and thoughts, Dr. Piesic. I look at it this way. These students and these families want to go on these trips. They've wanted to go on these trips for some time. I look at it more way or from a point of how can we help these happen? How can we help make this happen? I don't see why we should stand in the way of those families and those students making the choice under the certain circumstances at the border, COVID restrictions, all those things mentioned. I guess I would go to the chaperones and say, what else can we do to make these trips happen? Not what can we do to not make them happen? The parents are choosing to go. If they don't feel comfortable going because of vaccine requirements or the issues at the border, that's fine, that's their choice, there's nothing wrong with that. But I don't see why we would stand in the way. I guess I would ask the chaperones, if they're able, if they can't see you, tell us what we can do to help make these trips happen.
For Canada, I, first of all, just to clarify, our company has a separate caveat for parents who do not want their children to be vaccinated. So instead of paying the six hundred and twenty dollar, well, getting everything back except for the six hundred and twenty dollars, they would get everything back except for the four hundred and fifty dollars, the same as canceling as a group. So they put that out there, um, specifically because of the, you know, controversy over the vaccine and what different people's wishes are. So that's one thing. For our trip, Ellie, you can talk to if you want to. I, I personally am more concerned about the liability issue than I am about the safety issue. Because like Jamie said, I feel like there's a lot of mitigation practices in place that have been in place for a while. And, you know, like that part is kind of like, well, that's how it is and that's what we need to follow because that's their rules. But, um, but the liability issue, we're running into things like if, if a student does have to stay or even if a parent has to stay, you know, and they miss out on work or they miss out on a contract because that's the kind of job they have. Like, what does that mean to us as a district and me as a chaperone? Quite honestly, as far as liabilities are concerned. I'm not a lawyer and I can't pretend that I know any answers to these questions. I personally would feel more comfortable being able to talk to our district lawyer ahead of time and maybe get some things in writing from the board and from the lawyer to cover these possible situations, like if then situations, if this happens, then we'll do this. Because I feel like that's not a decision that we could really make as chaperones and we shouldn't wait to think about them until we're in that situation.
When you speak of liability, um, I just have the disadvantage of not being able to see you.
Where's the camera?
The concern is the district, but families that are impacted or the employers or.
Let's just ask you to clarify. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I mean, when we, when we first started talking about this, similar to when the Teaching and Learning Committee started talking about this, you, more and more things kind of become considerations as you consider different scenarios that could potentially happen. And we were just thinking of possible scenarios. So there could be a child who is in Canada, who is traveling with their parent. Presumably, if either one of them tested positive for COVID, then both of them would stay. All of that cost is covered by the company. But there could be a situation where the parent needs to come back for something. Like maybe they have a business trip. Maybe they have, you know, maybe they want their child to stay there with a chaperone instead. Or there could be a child who doesn't have a parent with them. And then a, I would, I would assume it would need to be a chaperone who is an employee of the school district would need to stay with that child. Who that would be has a lot of considerations in it in the first place. You know, who's available, who, who is, who is that parent? Is that parent, for example, if a, if a child signed up to go on a trip with me, they know me and I have been their child's teacher. Would they feel comfortable if their child got, um, you know, had tested positive for COVID and another chaperone stayed with their child? When I say with, I mean, in a room next door or whatever the case may be, for the duration of their isolation time? So it's just, there's a lot of different considerations. And I think that we need to look at that and it would make, to make this trip happen. to look at that, and it would make, to make this trip happen, I would think that we would need, um, policies or some kind of guidance as to what we should do in these scenarios.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
Mr. Baumgart?
I've said before that this is becoming so complex over these last couple of years, and particularly in the next couple of years, that I just really have a difficult time supporting international traveling like this when it's becoming so out of hand into, into the complexity of what we have to deal with. Yeah, I know that sometimes people would like to go to these foreign countries and stuff like that, and I guess my kids had the opportunities too. But right now, it's just a mess. And it's, 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 yes, there's liability, I don't care what's going to, you know, whether it's dollar liability or somebody gets into trouble, and all of a sudden, it's the school board or the school district of Waukesha that did this. And we don't need that kind of activity right now. Um, I, I'm in the, in the favor right now of sticking with the cancellations that we've talked about, talked about a little while ago. Now, whether it goes to 2024 or 2023, I guess I don't have a big concern there, but I'm not in favor of getting this fixed up right now so that this summer or next summer, whenever it is, these kids can go. I, I'm, I'm stuck from allowing that to happen. I've been that way before, so this is not a secret to people that have heard me with the international stuff. Uh, and sometimes the stuff that they're doing international for could be accomplished in the United States. I mean, we have places of real interest to see things, uh, not, not in all cases. I know you're, you're feeling one thing, but there are situations where we've sent people to different countries so that they could speak to the Spanish people. My gosh. We've got them all over, you know, all over town, et cetera. Or they could be there to help them build their huts or whatever it is. We've got people in all the United States that are in need of, are in need of help. So I don't have a big concern for moving into a, uh, the offers that were made up earlier that we're going to maybe just shut this down for now, for a year and a half or two and a half years. That's where I am. Um, and relative to whether, whether these people want to go to France, or whether they want to go to Germany, or wherever they want to go, yeah, well, take your kids and go. But right now, we aren't, I don't think we should be stuck with this problem. And I, I've, I've said that last week at the meeting, I would prefer that we just say right now, we're going to stop for a year and a half, two and a half, whatever it is. That's, that's where I am. I just want to let you know where I am, and that's not a secret, because it was there before. Thank you.
Yeah, Corey. Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. Um, I totally understand and respect that, Mr. Baumgart. I just, I view it as being overly cautious as far as what may happen. I think this is the new normal for at least the near foreseeable future. Um, I just can't stand in the way of these kids wanting to go on these trips. If it's too risky, too concerning, there's too many variables that they are not comfortable with and their families, then, um, sorry, um, they don't, they don't go. Um, I'm sorry, I'm having a lot of problems, but, um, I just think time's, time's going by too quickly, these kids are growing too fast. Um, just to stop this opportunity, I think, is not warranted. Thanks.
And Dr. Cook, would you, would you tell us what the Level Four rating is and what it means?
Yeah, it essentially means do not travel for a number of reasons. I don't have them all in front of me, but, you know, political instability, natural disaster, disease spread, um, you know, uh, crime, kidnapping, terrorism. I mean, all of that stuff contributes into how you get a Level Four rating. Um, and it, it specifically says it's, it's a do not travel warning. You know, countries that have that warning prior to COVID were places like Afghanistan, um, you know, places that had active wars going on. Um, and the Department of Homeland Security, I believe it is, is the one that monitors, or the Department of State, they adjust those, you know, periodically, so you can go Level Three, Level Four, back and forth, um, you know, frequently over the course of a year, just going, depending on what's going on in your country.
So I, I've been on this board a long time, and we have never had a discussion like this before. I don't think we have ever approved any trip when we've had a Level Four rating. Is that correct, Jordy? I mean, I don't recall ever sending...
I don't, I don't believe so. I, I mean, but again, our field trips, you know, prior to COVID, it, it, I think it was a year or two prior to COVID, we had a trip going to France. Um, that was the first time we really took a look at field trips, and it was right after the mass shooting, um, you know, in a couple of locations, terrorism in France. Um, I don't remember if the trip went on or not, I can't say for certain, um, but you're saying no. So that trip was canceled due to the terrorist act. Um, we, uh, prior to, or just as COVID broke, uh, we had a number of trips that ended up getting canceled, um, and we ended up dealing with the travel companies trying to get refunds for families as a result of it. Um, and like we discussed at the TNL meeting, you know, with these current trips, just the scenario or the requirement that one of our staff members would have to be, you know, chaperoning a student who is isolated in a hotel room by themselves because their parent isn't along on the trip, you know, that does take, shifts the burden from what is a parent who has to be there on site to placing it on one of our staff members. And a middle school-aged kid who's stuck in a hotel room for a week by themselves, I don't see that as a safe environment that the district would be putting that child in. I understand the parent has to give permission, but we still are the ones that are saying yes to this trip. Um, I have chaperoned international travel before when I was a teacher. Um, I do know that there have been some dicey situations that we were in over a decade ago, uh, students getting their luggage stolen, um, you know, pickpockets and such. So, I mean, that existed well before we thought of COVID and well before we were really paying, you know, close attention to other situations that were going on in the world. So that, that's my two cents on the, on the issue.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that. I, I'm thinking similarly to Mr. Baumgart. I mean, the safety of our students has to come first. I, I just, I would not, I can't imagine if something happened to one of those students on any of these trips. I, I just, I, I just don't think we should be allowing our students to be potentially put in harm's way, and I, I'm just liking, uh, thinking very similarly, uh, to Mr., Mr. Baumgart. Mr. Zenobia.
I just had one, uh, final follow-up to, I believe, what Ms. Rath had said about parents. It, when you were speaking about some, you know, potential, uh, talk with legal, I got the sense that maybe there's parents that don't fully understand the repercussions that may or may not occur on either of these trips. Is that fair to say, or are all the parents pretty much know, uh, if their kid gets stuck in Canada, especially, you know, one of the younger kids that isn't with a parent? Do they, are they well-versed in these issues? I know this has been several years now that this is, two years that this has been planned, correct? So...
We informed all of the parents of, very plainly, I believe. I think all of you, or at least the Teaching and Learning, received the email that we sent out to the parents, um, which detailed all of the different possibilities for all three scenarios, whether we continue with travel this June, whether we would postpone until next June, or whether we would cancel altogether. Um, having said that, um, we know that some people read their email and some people don't read their email. Some people think further about something, and some people don't. So being able to answer whether someone fully understands something is, um, is not easy to do, I think.
Just one other question. How many, i-if this were postponed a year, even two years, uh, how many people do you assume will not?
Well, we...
We'll back out now, or...
We put a survey out to see that information. Oh, and by the way, while you guys were talking, I looked up, and the Level Four is 100% to Canada is 100% about COVID-19, the Omicron variant, um, according to the US State Department here. Um, sorry, let me pull up that survey. So we had 60 respondents out of 69 travelers, that includes kids and parents who are traveling, and 41 of them said that they would go on the same trip in June of 2023 if it were postponed. So, a majority.
Thank you. Ms. Reincheck?
Thank you. So I would like to make a motion, and, um, it's going to be to just change that last wording for the fall of 2023-24 school year to be 2022-23 school year. So that'll be a little over six months. A lot is going to happen as this variant goes. We don't know if a new one's going to come. We have no idea what's going to happen tomorrow, or a month, or next year. I mean, we just don't know. So, um, but I think in six months, we're going to have a better look at at least this variant and to see if anything should come of that. Or, um, so anyway, I'm just going to make a motion. And would I have to read the paragraph?
Do you want to read? Yeah, um, you might want to pick up...
I'll start.
From the word "that." You move "that" if you're, if you want to make that motion. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna...
Okay, I was just going to start with the word "the," the full board.
Let me, you make whatever motion you want.
Okay.
I'm not trying to tailor it for you.
The administration is recommending that any non-essential overnight travel be put on hold other than state, national competitions for sports and clubs for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year, and that no non-essential overnight international travel be considered until the fall of the 22, 2022-23 school year.
I second.
Is, okay, second by Mr. Montiel. Discussion, Ms. Raddie?
Just a clarification. The verbiage here says "put on hold." So does that mean these two would be simply postponed? Is that your intention, Ms. Reincheck?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
What about all other ones that come forward? We have one on the TNL agenda next month.
It says, but it says any non-essential overnight travel.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's what you, clear in what you, your meaning is. Mr. Baumgart?
Does that mean these are canceled?
Turn your...
Does that mean these are canceled? The two trips that are in place? Because isn't that what we wanted to prefer?
No, but...
They're put on hold, so they're not completely canceled.
Postponed.
They're postponed.
They're postponed, so that, it has a different impact on the family's return of money.
They won't lose their money. Correct?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So just to clarify, if this passes right now, what's on the table, our, our trip would be postponed, and we could start putting dates together and telling families about that. It wouldn't be on hold for another point in time when it would be approved again? Is that true?
Well, it still has to follow whatever policies we have in place, and I believe we have an 18-month policy. Um, you know, if, if the board approves a trip, that trip has to occur within that 18 months, otherwise it needs to come before the board for approval. Jordy, you want to clarify that?
So we did talk about Teaching and Learning that because these trips were already approved by the board, that we would not make them reapply? In this case, I just want to clarify that they would be eligible to travel next summer according to Ms. Reincheck's motion.
Next summer, next fall, if things are going well and they want to go, I don't see any problem with it as long as that Level Four advisory is gone. However, that works for them. But I also agree that, um, just to give you some peace of mind, that if we would have something written up, this, the parents would know, in this case, this would happen, in this case, and try to cover as many as we can. Um, you know, we don't know what the future will, we'll see about that, but, um, I, I agree that you want some peace of mind in letting parents know this could happen and you're okay with that.
Dr. Piasik?
Since these are both summer field trips, I would like to propose a modification to Ms. Reincheck's motion, and that would be instead of fall '22, '23, excuse me, that it would be June of 2023.
Is that an amendment? Is there a second to that amendment? Second by Mr. Zenobia. Okay, yes, Ms. Reincheck?
Okay. What about, uh, summer of this summer? If things are cleared up in three months? True, but if things are plan, if, if things clear out in the next month, are we still...
I, I, could I respond? I mean, I, I think that's the question, is what's the criteria? Right? And I, um, uh, a Level Four travel advisory for COVID is not my concern. My concern is what happens to students when they're trying to cross the borders because of the Level Four travel advisory for COVID. Right? It's not, it's not, it's not the reason for the advisory, it's the circumstances around the advisory that is my concern. So, you know, we, we can't hold these families up. They have to make a decision by the middle of March, at least in one case. Or, or they lose their money. So I think that's why they're looking to us for a decision. Either we're saying postpone it, hold the money that you've already invested, go next summer, or cancel now.
And when you say next summer...
'23.
Okay. Ms. Reincheck?
Is there any way we can table this one month just to see what is going to happen, just because so many things are happening right now?
Are you asking me? Sorry.
I mean, technically, we can table any, anything, any time, but, um...
I know you brought it here.
The, the group will not get their answer soon enough to help the students save money if we don't make a decision tonight. The kids will be out money. Some of them, not all, but some. That's, that's why this was moved, that's why when it was a discuss, when we first started this as a discussion item at TNL, you know, we, we thought we had another month to make a decision, but we found out at TNL that this would have a financial impact on students if we didn't make a decision tonight. Does that make sense?
May I make a, a statement as well? I, I do have some seniors on my trip, um, and when we postponed the last time, we lost quite a few people with the, the last postponement because they graduated. Um, and that included two parents, um, two or three different seniors who were, who were scheduled to be on that trip. Um, so my fear it, with postponement is just that I will lose more, more students, and it might not be viable for us to continue the trip beyond that.
Mr. Dietz?
Could other, um, students take those places and those slots and make the payment, and it would be like a wash?
Potentially. I'm, I'm not sure who will want to after we've postponed it twice, so...
Sure, sure.
But, I, I, I mean, absolutely, that would remain open if it was postponed another year.
There is that possibility, okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? We should be talking now specifically on the amendment. So the amendment, would you read that back to us, Sue, so we make sure we're, we're clear?
The amendment would need to change the wording from fall of 2020... The amendment is to change the wording from the fall of 2022 school year to the summer of the 22-23 school year.
Is everyone clear on that? Summer of 2022. So it's at the end, essentially, it's at the end of the 22-2023 school year, correct? That, that was the intent? Dr. Piasik?
I would, my intent was that that would allow these two active field trips to be postponed to the following summer.
Yep. Not this summer, but the next one, a year and a half roughly.
So then that, wouldn't that be 2023 summer?
Yeah. It is actually 2022 right now, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's what I've been trying to...
Also 10:30.
That's what I've been trying to...
So 2023-24, summer.
Summer of 2023.
Oh, wait, s, wait, let... Oh, wait, wait, let's say that, okay. Sue, why don't you read what you believe the amendment was?
And I may be wrong.
And Dr. Piassek, let's make sure that she's getting this right, because it was your intention, or you made it.
So that it would be, the full thing would be that any nonessential international overnight travel be put on hold other than state, national competitions for sports and clubs for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year, and that no nonessential international overnight travel be considered until the summer of the 23-24 school year?
I'd like to retract my amendment, because I did misunderstand what Ms. Reinacek was proposing. She is proposing that this fall '22, we would reconsider international field trips, and that would open the window for this, these trips to begin again next summer, which I am okay with.
So you're withdrawing?
So I would like to withdraw that amendment, yeah.
Who had made the second to the motion?
I did.
Mr. Zanobia?
I retract.
Okay. All right.
We have no amendment now, right?
Well, it's been retracted, so we won't vote on it. Yeah.
So we're back to the...
Yeah, the amendment is retracted. So we're back to the initial motion.
Do you want me to read that one to you?
Why don't we read it one more time, and, and then maybe we might have to do a little translation to make sure we all understand the dates that we're, we're thinking about here.
That any nonessential international overnight travel be put on hold other than state, national competitions for sports and clubs for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year, and that no nonessential international overnight travel be considered until the fall of the 2022-23 school year.
Okay. Any questions on the dates of the motion? Are we all clear on that? Yeah, Dr. Piassek?
I don't have a question about the date. I have a question about the broad sweeping inclusion of this motion. So the first portion of this says, any nonessential overnight travel, not just international travel. This is all nonessential?
No, it says none, it says international.
No, it doesn't.
It does not.
Doesn't say it.
It says, "nonessential overnight travel other than state, national competitions for sports and clubs." I'm not okay with that.
The motion was for international. The motion is what was...
Those who have Board docs, it's different than our paper.
Yeah, and I'm looking for my script.
International is on Board docs. I'm looking at it.
It's not on our paper copy.
That is what you read originally. Your motion is in it.
It's on Board docs.
Where?
Um, so on Karen's, it says, "any nonessential overnight travel." On Board docs, it says, "any nonessential international..."
Yeah, that's what I have here.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Karen.
Thank you. Someone said about any trips coming forward next month. What else is on, what else is planned?
So next month, we have a Germany-Austria trip for consideration for summer of '23.
Okay.
So with your motion, you...
So, so what you actually said did not, I don't know what you said, if you included international, or you didn't, okay.
I'll read it again.
Well, we could make an amendment.
Okay.
Because the motion is on the table, so we could make an amendment to...
We don't have to make an amendment.
I think we all know what we mean.
Do a friendly amendment? We have done friendly amendments in the past.
With the word "international."
Is everyone okay with putting the word "international" in? There is one word "international" already, but in the earlier part. Okay. All right.
Yes.
Cory, you're good? Okay.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, yep.
Ms. Landish, would the, would these particular field trips have to reapply again? No. And then what would be?
Let's pay attention to the speaker, please.
What would be the drop dead date that we would have to notify them? Or do we make these decisions six months in advance, or, or is there best practice for that?
Well, again, the, the policy recommends that the field trips come, excuse me, 18 months ahead of the trip. But again, we, we confirmed that these two trips would not have to apply after the board motion tonight.
Right.
The chaperones are here at 10:40 at night, and they would be able to communicate to their parents that it would be rescheduled for summer of '23.
And then we, we, we would or would not have to approve that?
You would not. You've already approved it.
Unless we bring it back for some reason. Okay.
Any other questions? Sue, I'm going to have you read the motion one more time here.
They have to charge you.
Friendly amendment included, please.
That not, any nonessential international overnight travel be put on hold other than state, national competitions for sports clubs for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year, and that no nonessential international overnight travel be considered until the fall of the 2022-23 school year.
Everyone clear on what they're voting for?
No, I do have a clarification.
Okay.
When we say that no international travel will be considered, do we mean that will not be considered to be scheduled, or do we mean will not be considered at the board?
Right.
Does that make sense, what I'm asking? I want to clarify, will we, will we be entertaining travel 18 months prior to the fall of 22-23, 20?
Yeah, I mean, and that essentially is what we had done before. There was a period of time where we had suspended travel. And, but we still, did we hear any at that time? We didn't hear any.
Not when we suspended.
When we suspended? Not even ones that were further out? We just heard none?
Right, they waited until the vote was...
Okay, okay. So that's what you're asking, right?
That's what I'm asking. I, I think it's very important that we have clarification on this. When will be the next point in time that we can, that we will actually consider? Because it sounds like there's one on the agenda for next month.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a year and a half out. I mean, we haven't...
I'm going to have to go back to the person who made the motion, and what is your intent there?
Can I change the word "considered" to, um... Yeah, board approved or approved?
Said accomplish what we need to accomplish, though. Yeah, Bill.
Personally, I like the word concerned, considered, because what it's saying, we're going to consider it, because we still have to approve it. That's not, that's not the approval. It's considered, they bring it to the board, and we say, yes or no?
Yes, and I think that's the question is, is will TNL entertain any trips for discussion, not for approval, but for discussion over the next, until, until the fall? And, and I can see how...
That's why the word "considered" is there, in my wording.
Okay.
Ms. Reinacek?
How about if I take out the words "be considered"? So no nonessential overnight international travel until the fall?
If that's, if that's your intention, I mean, you can make that amendment.
Yes. I will make the amendment to strike "be considered." Basically, just nobody going outside the country until the fall of '22-23.
And essentially, we won't talk about any, where there will not be anyone bringing forth?
They still can. It doesn't say that they can't.
Correct.
Okay.
Hey?
Yeah, Cory.
Quick question? I'm sorry, can you say yes?
Yes, yes, Cory, go ahead.
Okay. I would like, I guess, my understanding of the motion is that travel should not occur until we revisit it in the fall, but I would hope that people who want to plan these trips are not prevented from doing that. They should be able to plan it, come to, you know, the committee and say, hey, this is what we're thinking of doing. So if it does get lifted, the travel restriction, they're ready to go. They don't have to start from day one. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yep. And I think that's what we're trying to clarify, Cory, and I'm glad that you shared what your point of view is on that. Does it get it done with that? And I, I don't know, should we have another friendly amendment? I, I get a little afraid of friendly amendments, multiple ones.
I think one of the, could I, please? I think one of the challenges that we're having is we're trying to address these two field trips, and we're trying to make a forward-looking, like, kind of policy decision, all in the same motion. If I understand what Ms. Reinacek is recommending, is that these two field trips would be postponed until next summer '23, and that we would continue to entertain international field trips, but we don't want anyone leaving the country until September of 2022.
I would, I would interpret that this way. Is that in the motion? So right now, we do have "be considered" in the motion. Was, is that okay, or was that confusing? You know, so, I mean, I could interpret, I'm not going to go by my interpretation. Mr. Dietz?
To me, it seems like the soonest that anyone could go on a field trip based on the motion, Ms. Reinacek, is the fall of '24, but I could be confused on that.
Uh-uh. Be next fall.
Okay, '22.
Next fall.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean '24. I meant '23.
'22, '23.
Okay.
And international is what we're trying to say.
School year.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Dr. Piassek?
Fall '22. That's this coming September, not next year's September.
Okay.
No one can ask?
This, this coming fall. The way it's written, or the way it was presented, was this coming fall.
Okay. But it's a summer field trip?
Correct.
So essentially, pops them out to, not this summer, but...
Right.
This summer of 2023.
Right, right.
So right now, we do have the words "be considered" in there. And I think people are just trying to understand your intent.
Okay. Should I retract my motion and make a new motion with the two corrections in there?
We already have the friendly amendment in of international. I'd be willing to make another friendly amendment, as long as everyone else is ready for that.
Did you want me to explain my intent one more time, Bill?
Hmm?
Okay. So because of the Level 4 travel ban warning, to have international travel not done, nobody going internationally, our students, until at least the fall. These, this trip is not until summer.
Fall of 2022.
Yes, this coming fall, '22-23 school year. But this trip is a summer trip, so it really won't happen until the following summer, which is still 2023, 22-23. We can still consider other things coming forward. People can still plan, but it gives them six months to just not go anywhere. Other trips are going to come forward here, but we can still talk about those like next month, but no one will be going internationally for at least six months for this.
Mr. Baumgart?
The question I have on that is if we have a policy that states you have to have your application in 18 months in advance. Are we violating that policy now? That would not pertain to these two. I know that.
Yeah, Mr. Como, and I did look at the policy language last week, and I'm trying to pull it up. It says, "Applications for overnight field trips are required no later than 18 months in advance of the first day of the trip." So it just needs to be in possession in the teaching and learning office, but not necessarily voted on within the 18 months. Does that make sense? That's how we interpret the policy, as, as stated.
So it's not 18 months, you can start, you can do it in tomorrow?
But the trip would have to be 18 months old?
Again, just two things I want to reiterate. Number one, we do not usually support international travel during the school year. Kids are not missing school one or two weeks. Let's just be very clear on that.
So for all practical purposes, it pushes all in...
To summer of '23.
It, yeah, pushes everything to the summer, not this, not a few months from now, a year from a few months from now.
Right.
From a practicality perspective, that's what this motion would accomplish.
But these the only two trips that would be affected?
Yes. They're the only two that have been approved.
Okay.
By this board, yeah. All right. Are we at a point where we can vote on this? Yes, Sue? Well, if you have a question, we got to make sure we get that answered.
I'm so confused. Did we do the friendly amendment to remove the "be considered"?
I think, I think we did. I, I saw heads bouncing up and down. Everyone okay with that?
Do I have to?
Cory, were you okay with the second friendly amendment of striking "be considered"?
Word, who makes the friendly amendment?
Okay. I thought I saw you agree to that, so...
Okay. So then...
So how about if we read the motion, including the two friendly amendments, and then we'll take our vote?
Okay. That any nonessential international overnight travel be put on hold other than state, national competitions for sports clubs for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year, and that no nonessential international overnight travel until the fall of 2022-23 school year.
All right. Let's take that vote, Sue.
Okay. Amanda Rady?
I knew it'd be first. Yes.
Kelly Piassek?
Aye.
Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia?
No.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery?
No.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes seven, two. I would also like to say, maybe just a, a comment here, and, so, no, nobody planned on this. And there still could be more Level 4s being issued at different times during the year. Next fall, we don't know. Can't predict that. And I, you know, I, there's no perfect way for us to say that we can look any chaperone, or any student, or any parent in the eye, and say that we may not change some of our decisions anytime throughout the year. And we don't want to do that, but sometimes we have to. So just wanted to share a little bit of perspective there. Nobody wants to inconvenience anyone. We all want to have great opportunities for our students, but we also need to balance that with safety, so. All right, moving on. Mr. Dietz, do you have any more action items, or are we moving into the discussion items?
Discussion. Our first discussion information item...
And thank you for our chaperones for being here right tonight.
Yes, very much for staying here. Our first discussion information item tonight is the Woody Year Achievement Gap Reduction, or AGR, grant update. One of the requirements of their achievement gap reduction grant is to present twice a year to the Board of Education on how the grant is being implemented. Woody Year Principal Brandy Hart and Director of Elementary Learning, Melissa Yao, shared their plan to reduce the achievement gap, which is small class sizes, 18 or less in grades kindergarten through third, and an AGR instructional coach or interventionist focusing on kindergarten and first grades. Current achievement data for students at the identified grade levels was also presented during the meeting.
Sue, any discussion on this? Okay, Mr. Dietz?
Our second discussion information item was an East Alternative High School update. Luke Pinion, Director of our Student Services, and Susan Poppy, Principal at East Alternative High School, shared exciting news and updates about East currently, as well as for the 2022-2023 school year. The presentation included efforts to increase engagement, academic rigor, available pathways, attendance numbers, and graduation rates.
Any discussion on this topic?
If you haven't seen the slide deck that she gave us in the Friday packet, it's, it's pretty amazing. And she's only been at the school for, what, half a year? And she's only been at the school for, what, half a year? And I think those of us that saw the presentation were pretty impressed with some of her goals and her vision for that school and the students there, so. And then I did also invite her to bring one of her students to our monthly full board meetings to give a presentation from East High School. And hopefully, she'll take us up on that opportunity, because we hear from the other three, it might be nice to hear from some kids at her school as well, so. All right, third discussion information item was a high school scheduling update. Rachel Herman, Director of Secondary Learning, along with Principals Kevin Kitzler and Ryan Pat, and Assistant Principal Brian Schley, reviewed revisions made to the high school schedule that will go into effect for the 2022, '23 school year. The two major revisions to the schedule are the addition of a daily home room for all students and a consistent start time for first hour class for all of our students.
Questions or comments on this? All right, Mr. Dietz.
Our fourth discussion information item was the Library Book Process and Classroom Libraries update. Jody Landish, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, joined by Rachel Herman, Melissa Yao, and Melina Copeland, a Library Media Specialist in our district, provided an update and answered questions regarding the ongoing maintenance and selection process for library materials outlined in the Library Media Handbook and according to our board policies. In addition, the status of taking classroom library inventory at the secondary level and the planned timeline for the elementary level were also shared.
Any further discussion or comments on this? Mr. Zenobia?
I do have some questions, and I don't know if Jody wanted to start the discussion with the list update.
I can do that, Mr. Zenobia, so I just, those of you watching TNL meetings every month, this was a discussion topic. Mr. Zenobia joined us as part of other business. This was an item that he definitely wanted to hear further about, so thank you for pitching that to me. I guess the update I wanted to make the board and community aware of is since the TNL meeting, it was requested that we make public the listing of library books that had been brought to our attention for consideration. So, we had a spreadsheet of that, along with the designated results of the review as to whether or not they moved up a level, whether or not they were even part of our inventory at all, or whether or not they were removed either from SORA or in circulation. And so, we have made that available for the public, as well as our Library Media Handbook. So, that is currently available on our website under the Families tab, Parent Resources, and the Library tab. So, that is available for people's view.
Thank you. I do appreciate all the time that you've spent. I've sent you all a lot of emails and a lot of phone conversations on this with Ms. Landish, with Dr. Cook and Dr. Seibert. So, I think what's important to note here is that a process has been established and is ongoing. Just a few questions I had, excuse me, for tonight was, I understand that the three administrators and the five librarians had formed this group to do the review process. Give us a little bit, how was a decision on each book made? Was it all of you or some of you had read it? You had, did it come down to a vote? Did it come down to, how did you wait reviews and what have you, or the eight people involved?
Sure. So, as mentioned at TNL last week, the process of the eight people on this team took the scholarly reviews, which are linked on the spreadsheet, and looked at the grade level appropriateness, content of the books, et cetera. We looked at at least three reviews that the librarians normally look at when purchasing books, and then made sure that we had at least three people in that group of eight who had also read the book. So, between the scholarly reviews, the readers within the system, we then came to a consensus, and the team would have to, it wasn't as formal as a board vote like this evening, but it had to be a consensus of the group as to what decision was made at that point. If it would remain the same, again, we're fine. It seems appropriate where it was placed. It could be moved up to the high school level, maybe not at the middle school level. That's how the decisions were made.
Do we have any, excuse me, books on the list that remain at the elementary level?
Are you looking, I
If you don't have the list in front of me, that's
On our website and see, having the inventories right there, so it'll show what schools it's located.
Okay. Let me turn to the notification process. My understanding is parents can opt out of the notification process. If they do get a notification, whether it's online or an email on a book they actually checked out, it will give the title of the book to the parent or the guardian, correct?
That's correct.
Is there any possible way to add something to that, to warn of the sexual content that are in these books?
So, you're, the question is if there is, if there's a book that has sexual content, is there a notification?
Is there something, something that would explain to the parent who just gets a notification that your child checked out later, Gator? Anything in addition to just the title? Can that be done? Or is that already there? My understanding is it's not, but
No, you're correct, Mr. Zenobia. That's currently not a part of the notification process, and we are looking into, could there be potential information given beyond the title in terms of the notification system?
Okay.
They don't currently, as Destiny is, as we work with Destiny, they don't currently have protocols set up to give like a full, full review of the book along with the title to parents. We did make mention that if a parent wanted to look up via Common Sense Media or other reviews, that they could certainly do that, but we have not initiated a review process on every book that is checked out of our library.
Right, and it would only go to what we currently know, and the process is good because we're going to have more books brought to our attention, I'm sure. If we don't have a process in place, well, what do we do with them? So, this is only going toward the 100 or so titles that have been reviewed right now, but that list is likely to grow, correct? I would assume. Ms. Landish, I'm sorry, I can't see you.
Yeah, no, I'm trying, sorry. I'm trying to sneak around the corner. I mean, yet, that, who knows what will happen right after the meeting tonight, but I will tell you that that spreadsheet has stayed pretty constant since October.
Yeah.
I mean, I've had maybe two to four titles that have come to my attention between the months of November and February.
Sure.
But I could be open to 20 things coming on my desk tomorrow morning, so we'll just respond as they come to us. Sorry, Amanda.
The last question pertaining to notifications is around the classroom libraries. Once those are uploaded to Blackboard, they will have the same notification process, or will it just be the parent goes and looks to see if that book is available there?
So, currently, there is no notification process set up for a classroom library. That was not anything we talked about having available. What we had wanted to make available is a transparent book list for any parent to see what titles, if they walk into, for example, a high school classroom, middle school classroom, what titles does the English teacher have as supplemental materials that a child could have accessible, so that is transparently posted on the teacher's Blackboard course. There was no, those books are coded, they're not barcoded like library books, therefore wouldn't go through Destiny, therefore wouldn't go through the notification system.
Okay. Well, I, one last thing I think that maybe could be considered would be to move all of the books in question up to the age of 16, and then have any book that's checked out come with permission. And this is just a discussion tonight. That would be something that I think could be further discussed. Just going to throw it out there as, why wouldn't that be a little bit easier way to govern these 100 or so titles that we have and the ones that will probably trickle in?
I can look into that. I will make a comment that there are intellectual freedom laws that we will run against if we start dictating at what age levels is appropriate material for a child to read. That gets in a whole new territory that we would be up against. It's almost, you know, banning is a harsh word, but that is a form of banning in terms of accessibility, and that runs us some very interesting things we'd be up against.
I appreciate that. I, I'm not saying they would be banned. You could look at it that way. They would be accessible, but those who are accessing them would have parental consent, just like in our policies, we have consent around movie ratings, and we don't rent X-rated movies out, of course. So, that's, that's the spirit with which I'm asking the question, and it is just a question at this point. Can we explore that a little bit more and see if that is not the better way to go here?
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback. Dr. Piassek mentioned at last month's or last week's meeting that, could we look, something similar, Anthony, could we look into a marking system that would have the books rated and things like that? And again, we can continue to talk to people in this area, but initially, when we had these conversations around flagging books, the whole intellectual freedom conversation came up, and they were really advising against that in terms of marking books, flagging books, putting books in a certain area.
I understand. I think the other part of this would be, and this goes to the larger process of, I think we need a better system for when books come into the district altogether, and more of these titles are going to slip in, we're not going to know about them until someone reads it from the reviews that I've seen. So, it's, it's going to be a recurring issue. I think the process, which has started, is great. I think it can be expanded to catch some of these things that, I mean, are in the general libraries, and that is my concern, so. And I do appreciate all the work that you've done. You have done a great amount of work, and we're moving in the right direction, so thank you all for that.
Anyone else on this topic? Mr. Dietz?
Mr. Zenobia, would that be a recommendation to have more librarians added to the staff? Or is that anything to consider? Because I know, we used to have a librarian in every school, I think, at one time.
Yes, we did. I remember taking the vote to reduce them.
Every elementary, every middle school, every high school.
That's a good question. I know when Ms. Copeland was here the other night at TNL and answered some of these questions as we went through, she did reference that they have aides that they do work with. I don't know how many, if they all just have one. I agree that the workload coming in is, it's huge. I mean, five specialists can't review 8,000 books if that's what the number is, if it's six or five or whatever. There's also, was brought up in the same conversation, the balance that we need more nonfiction titles, and we can go a different direction and buy, balance out our books and the libraries, too, and get away from some of these areas that, I think we, I think if we got one, that's enough, but that's my opinion.
Just, just real quick, I think our media, library media specialists and their aides do review. They don't read, but they use, they leverage tools based upon professional reviewers to make the recommendations. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
It's just, they don't read every single book. I mean, there'd be no way that they could, so. And I think that's the point you're trying to make, is we can't read them. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I
I agree. They have a lot of workload there. I don't think they have to read all the books, but we're talking about a small percentage. So.
Dr. Piassek?
I don't know if Mr. Dietz was still completing comments, but just in response to the reviews, and we did talk about this at the TNL meeting, the reviews are incomplete when it comes to some of the content of these books. And I brought up some specific examples where what's in the review does not accurately depict the graphic nature of what's in the book. That is not me standing here justifying, you know, burning and banning books. I'm just making a point that we can't rely on reviews if the reviews don't actually tell us what's in the book, and that's my concern, and I believe that's how some of the books of greatest concern did end up being selected. You know, not to mention, I think our policy relies on credibility of the author and previous works, and I shared an example where you could put all those things together and think you were doing the right thing.
Sure.
And it was a very wrong thing, so, well, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on this topic? Yes, Ms. Renacek?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, maybe suggestions. So, it seems like once we actually have these books that are in question, it's quite the process to move them and/or remove them, which is an even bigger problem. Is there any way to have a subcommittee overseeing the review before purchasing? If I, I was taking notes, watching the TNL meeting, and it sounds like 5% of every 100 books are actually read. Well, no, that was, 5% of every 100 books were asked to reevaluate. Okay, never mind. So, if they're not able to, if the media specialists are not able to read every single book, then if graphic content such as like X-rated pictures are in there, are they even looking at the pages? Or if they're looking at the reviews and the reviews might say something could be sketchy, are they actually looking for those sketchy words? And then they're still purchasing?
Yeah, during, during the meeting, I think, Jody, you gave, and Melina gave a pretty good explanation of some things that we're doing now. Can we change our processes? I mean, I think that's the question you asked, but do you want to maybe elaborate on what we're doing right now?
Sure, Karen. I think you can absolutely expand the team that's doing that work, right? To Greg's point, like, do you want to add more librarians? I mean, there's, there are five people doing what they feel is a comprehensive review. They also seek consultation from other librarians in neighboring districts. They do everything that you mentioned, right? So, if they look at the reviews, to Kelly's point, and nothing has flagged anything that would be out of the ordinary, when they get the book, if there are visuals in it, they would certainly page through. Many times, though, and I think they're definitely been on alert, right, the past year and a half, I think they are more apt now to get a team together to have those three reviewers before they onboard anything, because they certainly before they onboard anything, because they certainly care about what we put in the hands of kids. And they are all, you know, excellent at what they do, so they're, I mean, yes, to answer your question on your first suggestion, yes, absolutely. And those things are already being put into play in terms of like expanding the work before it's onboarded.
Okay. I have one more question.
Hmm?
Um, something I heard was, well, a couple of things. Amanda, I believe you were talking about maybe if rape was the situation, about life situations? I think you were referring to like your heartbreaking situations, um, uncomfortable books and topics to connect them with maybe our source. And they can become a tool to help uncomfortable life situations. But I think, and then one of our media specialists said, uh, not every single book is for every single student, that she's trying to help a child find a book that matches where they are. That's why we have books to help with difficult times. Um, or to have books with difficult topics in them. Then I would think that a trained counselor, like if something is really seriously wrong like that, that a trained counselor should be handing them those books. Those books should be somewhere else in a counselor's office so that if they're actually thinking that's what the child is going through, whatever it is, that those are the ones who, a trained counselor is giving them a book, and then maybe telling the parent about it, not a media specialist that might think they might be going through it. Why would we have such? Why would we have that going on?
Are you asking me that question?
Sure, anyone?
I'll just, okay, I appreciate the example. I think it is, um, what makes me think of that, Karen, when you describe that, if, is, um, if there is a book, let's just say this comes to my head, okay? If there's a book on self-harm, and you know a child is in danger, like, yes, that would absolutely be a wraparound, like counselor conversation, but there could be titles of a book having to do with a trip to Florida, and a situation happens there, like, you, you don't know in the course of a script of a book that it's, there's going to be self-harm, because it doesn't say, this is a book on self-harm. Do you see what I'm saying? I'm not trying to make light of it, but like, it, it's not, um, unless it's a improvement book or a self-help book about an issue. I, I can't speak to what Mrs. Roddy, you can certainly, Amanda, speak to that. But from, from your example, right, we don't have media, we don't have media center people saying, here's a, a book, if you're in, in harm or you have trauma, that's not, I, I don't-
So to put that, to put that part of the meeting in context, and again, I wasn't there, I, I also watched it, Karen. Um, I think Molina was, Molina was, um, just trying to provide an example of, uh, a student will come and they have to do an assignment, and she was just trying to talk through how she might help a student select a book. And she just used that as an example, um, just to try and put it into the bigger context as to how that came up. And, and I think she was, she was just trying to say that her strategy is to listen to the student and understand where their interests and where they are in life so that she could help that student make a, a selection. So I just wanted to give that broader context. Did I represent the meeting, what was said at the meeting well?
That comment, absolutely, Mr. Cuomo, yes.
I just wanted to broaden it out a little bit, so. Ms. Rodney?
What I said at the meeting was that I agreed with the concerns that Dr. Piasak had had with regards to having books of this nature at an appropriate level. I agreed with the idea of having some sort of, um, oh, what's the term? We've said it a hundred times tonight. Um, review a link. They had recommended Common Sense Media for parents to review when we get that, um, email that says, your child has checked out book ABC. In addition to that, I said, even though we see these books and the content as being uncomfortable or X-rated, there are students in our district that live those experiences. And to not, and I don't believe this was the intent of Dr. Piasak, but, um, not to try to take those away completely. I believe her, her goal with her statement was just to make sure it's in, in appropriate hands, or maybe not. Maybe I'm misinterpreting what, um, she said. But my, my statement was to say, just because it's uncomfortable for us doesn't mean that it's not the experience of other students in our districts. And if that book is the tool, that if they're, maybe they haven't shared with a parent, they haven't shared with a counselor or a teacher what they've experienced. If they're reading it, they can see a full picture of what can happen. It might give them the tools or the, or resources to be able to speak out to a trained professional for assistance, or to a police officer, whoever it might be. That was my, I, I'm not saying that I want this in the hands of everybody. I agree. It needs to be at an appropriate level. But my, my statement was, let's get out of our own comfort zone and have a little empathy and see what, um, the circumstances that some of our students may be in.
Mr. Zanobi?
Um, I just have one, one final thought to add to that, and I've had a conversation with Dr. Cook on this as well. Because I want his insight in this area. And if, if you want more, or if you haven't had a chance, give him a call. Um, I reached out to a, a clinical psychologist that, uh, deals in trauma, with children in these areas, and I did so to ask her this question about the value of these books for kids who are dealing with trauma of any kind. Just a general comment, uh, for our sake here was, she said, in the right hands, any tool, it, it can be useful, uh, from someone who's trained, a trained psychologist, what have you. But she said it can be equally detrimental. It's on the kid, it's on the relationship of a psychologist with a child. And so I understand the point that's been made. Uh, it's been made by several people, uh, throughout this process. And, and while it is a valid point, I weigh that against these books being in the libraries for, you know, roughly eleven thousand five hundred students. Okay, some of which are in elementary and middle school. Versus the kids that it will, may help in that area. And I know, I believe there are some, I've been told there are some. So, um, I don't wanna discourage that. I, I don't wanna ban books. I, um, I do think we need a lot more done around the notification and allowing parents to be more a part of this process. I- in this day and age of mental health, even parents struggle to know where their own kids are. And the more we can involve everybody in this, parents, our professionals in the schools, our, our counselors, our psychologists, our social workers, uh, everybody will be better off. This goes to the heart of the issue of society sexualizing children. Uh, as a school board member, I want no part of that. This is a very small, uh, part of that. Kids go out and they see this stuff in the world all the time. They're exposed to it all the time. All we can do is try to, um, make our best decisions while we have them here for eight hours a day. And that's my concern. So, with that, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Dr. Piasak?
Thank you. I do apologize. I know it's late. This is a very important topic. I feel like sometimes important topics end up at the end of the agenda, and we're running out of time, but-
We simply rotate the committees.
I, first, I just wanna say to all of you, this is a difficult topic, and I appreciate that we are leaning into this conversation, because we don't agree, and that's okay. We don't agree on every issue, and that's okay. And we're, we're, I think we're all being respectful and trying to interpret what each other kinda means, and I, um, you don't, you don't have to agree with me. What's really important to me, though, is that, that age appropriateness. We're, we're responsible for, for learning, for the academic experience of our students, but they also are living a majority of their lives in our buildings, and that's an important thing. I am, I am not a librarian. I know some librarians. Um, I don't play one on TV. I, I do not subscribe to the, the Bill of Rights of the librarians. I don't agree that every piece of material should be available to every human being, regardless of age or appropriateness. That's, that's my opinion. So, um, it does surprise me sometimes how emotionally charged people are in response to us having conversations about what is age appropriate. Um, but it also surprises me that, that we've been given this latitude in the state statutes that allow us to basically give anything to a child, and, and I think that creates some problems for us. I know there, there are, there are laws, and I spoke to that at, at TNL, that might not allow us to make some of these moves, and, and I don't have to agree with it, but we do have to abide by what is legally appropriate. But e- even with the, the handful of books that have kinda surfaced as this is just really not okay to have in the schools, I know people have focused a lot on how much time and energy are we gonna put into identifying a handful of things? This, this handful of things was, I, I just don't believe was appropriate to have in the hands of ten and eleven-year-olds. So I, I appreciate greatly the time and energy that the administration has put into walking this journey with us, because I do know that other districts are struggling with this. And, um, we've made some decisions that not all of us agree with, and maybe not everybody in our community agrees with. I think we've done it within, um, the appropriate legal constructs and, and well-intended that we make sure the right material's in the right hands. And, um, I, I just, you know, it's always kinda the eleventh hour, but I have, having three kids in the district, I've yet to receive a library notification. Doesn't mean that my kids don't read. They've always got books in their hands, but they're getting them through Sora, or they're getting them through classroom libraries. So we haven't resolved the, the whole concern, which is providing parents transparency to what their kids are reading. Um, as I mentioned, with our, our, um, video policies, you know, if, if there's an alternative requested by a parent, we make that available. If there's an, an R film or something that's not appropriate to a parent, I don't know that we do that with required reading in classrooms. I, you know, I'd like to understand more about that, but I know there have been some books assigned as required reading that's coming out of a classroom library or coming out of overdrive. Um, and parents aren't getting notifications of that unless they're talking about it with their kids. So as a parent, I would just advocate to other parents, you need to talk to your kids about what they're doing in school, and, and have conversations with them about the books that they read, and read those books along with their, with your kids. But that doesn't stop people from pulling things off of shelves. You know, I don't, I don't think we should hide things from kids, but I really do think we have a responsibility to make sure that the materials that kids have access to are age appropriate and don't create drama, I, trauma, not drama, maybe drama too. So I do understand that in some cases, literature can help a student process trauma. But I, I think in all cases, we should try to avoid creating trauma for students by putting the wrong materials in the wrong age group. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? This will be a topic that we'll continue to talk on, so we'll have a, a crack at this, uh, in the future, so. Greg, uh, back to you?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting report this evening. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March first, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM here in the Boardroom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That, that does conclude our committee reports. Any other business, um, for future board meetings that we'd like to have agendas in? Yeah, Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, this, this really is still part of the, uh, previous board stuff. I, I missed a paragraph when we were going over the policy stuff. It's not about, about P policy. Administration will be meeting with Dr. Bloom, who is our new coordinate with the NEOLA, uh, organization. This is regarding the NEOLA release of, uh, on February twenty-fourth, of a number of policies that we'll be looking at. Those policy revisions will be brought to the committee in the upcoming months. And we, because we are not ready for them, the Policy Committee meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February fifteenth, is canceled. The next Policy Committee meeting will be on March fifteenth, six o'clock. That concludes that report.
All right.
I see people grinning.
Wow, yeah. And this is, this, this isn't, this is not up for vote. Dr. Piasak?
Can we just come and listen to public comments? Um, I would like to just ask, um, and maybe this is, uh, for the administration. We don't have to respond tonight, but I, I would really like to bring our KPIs into our board meetings. So there was a good amount of time spent on developing those, the key performance indices for the district. I know we've talked about dashboards. I know there's a lot of stuff going on. Um, but I think they really are the indicators of how we're doing. And so I feel like we should create some capacity to talk, to speak to those at our regular board meetings.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, um, we don't have a need for an executive session, is that correct, Dr. Seaver? We're all good? We don't have a need for an executive session, correct? All right, well, thank you, everybody. It's a long night. We stand adjourned.